Good evening. Follow the order. The City Council Meeting of Monday, November 27, 2017. Will all rise and salute the flag.
My pleasure, agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and one God, and indivisible, with the name of Justice Rauro.
Roll call of the members. Counselor Giannino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselski is absent. Counselor Patch.
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Counselor Vice President Keith.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of November 13, 2017.
All in favor?
Public hearings, calendar item number three. Hearing called is ordered on the repeal of an ordinance amending the zoning ordinances of the city of Revere, the definition of recreational marijuana facility.
May I speak from the chair? Permission to speak from the chair? Just to provide some clarity on this, we have a significant amount of public hearings tonight, so we'd ask that when people come up, they keep their comments brief, 30 seconds. On this particular public hearing, just want to make it clear that when the original marijuana legislation passed, the City Council acted swiftly to try to mitigate zoning issues down the road, so there was potential recreational marijuana zoned originally, so this would be to repeal that. So, any proponents would be in favor of repealing the recreational marijuana zoning. Any opponents would be not in favor of that. So, at this time, I'd like to just ask anyone, any of the public that would like to come up as a proponent for the repeal of the recreational marijuana zoning. Any proponents? Hearing and seeing none? We're going to close that side. Any opponents? Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none? I'm going to close that side. Any councils wishing to speak on this? Any Counsel, Counsel Rotundo?
Thank you. Counsel Keith, have we received any correspondence by Attorney Zalesnik regarding the issues that I spoke about? Okay, because I didn't get it in my packet, so what's there?
For the record, the city solicitor did state, and this was on a separate matter, that there would be, that they were not in the business of creating any form of a monopoly.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other councils wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none? May I also ask permission to speak from the chair one last time? So, I'm very happy that we're going to be putting this up to the public forum tonight, and we'll be putting this into zoning subcommittee on the 4th, where after zoning subcommittee, it will then be voted on on the following meeting on the 11th. And as I've mentioned numerous times, this was, this is a great step for the city to potentially remove recreational marijuana from our borders, with the exception of the potential right by the medical marijuana facility, which we would not be impeding on. So, I think this is a great, great step, and I appreciate the City Council's support. We're going to close this, and then we're going to refer to zoning subcommittee on December 4th at 4:30. All in favor?
Calendar item number four. Hearing called is ordered by the Board of Assessors relative to the FY '18 minimum residential factor.
Any proponents? State your name and record, name and address for the record.
Dana Branch of 40, Chairman of the Board of Assessors, 233 Proctor Ave.
John Varengian, Member of the Board of Assessors, 84 Library Street.
Matthew McGrath, Member of the Board of Assessors, 182 North Shore Road.
Good evening, Council. We're here to ask you to vote on the minimum residential factor, which will allow us to proceed with the setting of the tax rate. Historically, the City Council has voted on the 175 percent shift, which would result in a minimum residential factor of .894286, and what this does is, it provides the greatest benefit to the residential taxpayers. So, we're here for any further questions.
Okay. Just curious, any other proponents in the audience wishing to speak?
My name's George Anzoni, Director of Finance for the City of Revere, 281 Broadway, Revere, Mass. I'm very much in favor of this adoption of the 175 percent shift, because it takes the burden of the taxes off of the residential taxpayer. Something we've done over a number of years, and something hopefully you'll continue to do, and it's the fairest way to really tax the properties that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none? We're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none? We're going to close that side. Any City Councils wishing to speak? Any questions from the City Council? Counsel Powers?
This is certainly, Mr. President, this is something that we've always done in the past. It's, it's nothing new. It does provide some relief for the people in the city that are struggling at this time because of the high cost of city government, and I would urge my colleagues certainly to support this this evening, and give some, continue to give some relief to the ratepayers in the city. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Counsel Powers. Any other councils wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none? I'm going to close that side. Ask for roll call vote.
Shall the City Council adopt the minimum residential factor for fiscal year '18? Counselor Giannino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselski is absent. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. And Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the minimum residential factor for FY '18 has been approved.
Thank you, councils.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Counsel.
Counsel Giannino, Patch?
If I could just have a, say, a point of information, please?
Certainly. State your point.
I meant to say it at the beginning, and we just got rushed into the meeting here. But it's, I want to mention why my counsel to the right, Counselor Novoselski, is absent tonight. It was due for his passing of his father-in-law, a World War II veteran and longtime Revere resident, Louis Garber. I'd like to stand and have a minute of silence for him, please?
Absolutely.
Hearing called is ordered on a loan order in the amounts of $1.6 million for new fire apparatus.
Any proponents?
Yes. Okay. My name's George Anzoni. I'm the Director of Finance for the City of Revere, 281 Broadway, Revere, Mass. This is a loan order for the purchase of a new ladder truck for the City of Revere Fire Department. This piece of equipment will allow the Fire Department to replace a spare that has been many years in service. The one that is in service presently will move down to that spare, and the spare that's presently in service will be disposed of according to the Massachusetts General laws. But I am in favor of this. This is also included in the capital improvement plan, which will be before you tonight, and we'd like to, excuse me, I think that having this money pass would provide the Fire Department with a necessary piece of equipment for the, finding the fires and other things that they do, emergency situations they take in hand.
Thank you, Ms. Anzoni. Any other proponents?
John Accarigio, 30 Graves Road, Revere, former City Council, retired Fire Lieutenant, 32 years. People don't realize the city's growing. It's very busy. There's a lot of medical aids, a lot of auto accidents in the city, and the apparatus does a lot of running, more so when I was on. So, it's important that we keep up to date with the latest apparatus and equipment to keep the Fire Department intact. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel, or Counsel, former Counselor. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none? We're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none? We're going to close that side. Any City Councils wishing to speak? Counsel Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I think this is extremely important, that this bond authorization be passed. As you know, there's a lot of construction being done in the city with regard to the wood framing in some of these condominium projects, some of these apartment projects, and to not have apparatus like that available would be almost criminal. I think it's something that we certainly have to support, and I think the other thing we have to do is see if we can find a way to handle our medical emergencies in a more efficient way, rather than sending ladder trucks to someone that may be having some type of a medical emergency. But again, I think it's so important that we support this, and I would ask, again, my colleagues to support this this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other councilors? Hearing and seeing none? I'll offer my comments. Chief Bright updated us on the status of the fire equipment, and we could tell as a City Council that this was much-needed revenue, money to pay for the apparatus, and much-needed apparatus, so I think we all, we all be in favor of that, and this is going to go to a roll call vote. Roll call.
Shall the City Council approve a loan order in the amounts of $1.6 million for the purchase of new fire apparatus? Counselor Giannino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselski is absent. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved.
Madam Clerk, if I may also add, on a separate note, Counselor Novoselski's father-in-law's services will be at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow at the Thor funeral home.
Calendar item number six. Hearing called is ordered on an ordinance amending the shade tree ordinances of the city of Revere.
Julie Demaro, Revere, on the move. We're just asking to change the duties of the city engineer, who is currently in charge of all shade trees, to the tree warden, and this is for a grant that we are putting in to become recognized as a tree city.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none? We're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none? We're going to close that side. Any City Councilors wishing to speak? Counsel Rotundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a great move. It'll help make this process efficient, and I support it wholly, and ask for a vote after every Counselor speaks.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? So, this was actually going to be referred to Legislative Affairs on, on the 11th of December at 5:30. All in favor?
Calendar item number seven. Hearing called is ordered on a parity salary ordinance for employees not represented under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 150E, Section 10.
Any proponents wishing to speak? Mr. Anzoni?
Yes, my name is George Anzoni, Director of Finance for the City of Revere, 281 Broadway, Revere, Mass. This is a change in the ordinance that's usually done at the end of a contract period, in order that the non-union members of City Hall receive the same compensation, or like compensation, as those who are in the union in their respective units. There's Unit A and there's Unit B. So, we're looking for this ordinance to pass in order that the, those units, different units, for those units that do receive the union contract, for the ones that don't receive it can also get paid the same amount. So, it's a parity. It's a parity.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any proponents? Hearing and seeing none? We're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none? We're going to close that side of the hearing. Any City Councilors wishing to speak? So, we're going to refer this, oh, Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, I speak in favor of this. This is, I think it's called a parity, or I think it's, should be called a fairness act. So, it's whatever, whatever the semantics of it, it's about being fair to all employees in the city and not singling out people who happen to be in the union. So, I support this whole heartedly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none? This is going to go to Ways and Means on December 4th at 3:45. Counsel Powers, it's going to go to Ways and Means. All approved?
Calendar item number eight. Hearing called as ordered on the application of Bai Ping Huang, 28 Baldwin Street, Winchester, Mass, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to expand a non-conforming four-unit residential use to a six-unit residential use within the RB District at 6-8 Garfield Ave.
Any proponents?
My name is Bai Ping Huang. I am a homeowner of 6-8 Garfield in Revere. This is a big building, currently actually used as a five-unit for many, many years, for more than 10 years, and on the first floor, there's a big, big four-bedroom unit. It has a four-bedroom and one living room, and one kitchen, and two bathrooms. It's totally just in the mirror. It's a mirror. So, that's a two-bedroom on left side, and another two-bedroom on left side, with one bathroom on each side. Currently, it's just occupied by a family with a lot of relatives. This, currently, that's, I think, the two family living there. Because in Revere, four-bedroom apartments, the rent is relatively higher, so some family just, they live there, and then they get other relatives live together. So, I don't think this is safe for the kids, because if one family living there, and they try to get relatives or friends coming in to live together, they always change this family, and then it's not, this kind of thing's not safe for the kids. And affordability, and if I convert this two big four-bedroom unit to two small, two-bedroom units, the two, the two-bedroom unit will be more affordable. And there are also more and more young professional family in Revere right now. They are looking actually for one-to-two-bedroom apartment. This conversion will bring more young professionals in Revere. So, basically, I don't need to do any big job. I only need to add two doors and one simple kitchen in one unit, so now separate the big unit on the first floor, so now then can become six-unit.
Thank you. Any other proponents of this project? Any proponents? Hearing and seeing none? Any, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed to this project?
John Benetti, 34, Dana Street. Very familiar with this house. I grew up in that neighborhood. Number one is, it's, it's got no parking. They park on the sidewalks, but nobody ever tickets it, because part of it's Dana Street, and it, because it's dirt, they feel they can park there. So, you go to a six, we got a parking problem. Second, the house has never been inspected properly. The foundation's in very poor condition. The reason I know, because I've been there all my life, and I know people that live there. The carpets owned that house at one time. It was in such bad condition, they put metal rods through it, and welded it, and pulled it back together. Now, I don't think it's ever been inspected since that was done. I'm not in favor of doing six apartments, mainly because I don't think it's safe. Secondly, there is no parking. We got parking issues all over the city. I've been noticing on Centennial Ave, Garfield, there's increased parking every day. There's more and more cars coming.
I totally understand. I want to stick to this project here.
Well, that's part of the thing. Where are they going to, there is no parking there. They park on the sidewalk, and this city does not tag them. And I can show them where the curve is, and I've told the girl, and I've told people in this City Council before, it's illegal what they're doing, and this city never enforces anything, and this is why we're in the predicament we are today. I'm totally against this. Thank you.
Any other, any other proponents? Oh, sorry, any other opponents? Any opponents? Name and address the record, please.
Yeah, my name's Scott Kurtzer. I live at 24 Dana. Four houses up from the house being talked about there, and there is, there is a parking issue in that whole area. Lady lives across the street from me, is almost 80, and she gets, she loses her spot all the time. There's a couple other elderly people park on the street. They lose their parking spots. I don't think that you can fit any more cars in there. And the dwelling needs to be inspected. So...
Thank you very much. Any other opponents?
As it stands, as it stands, that house does not have a single off-street parking spot.
Opponents?
Wayne Rose, 189 Coolidge Street. I just have a question. This says four units. The lady said it's five units. Which one really is it?
Well, I don't have the, all the data in front of me. I think what's, in one of the packets, it does say five units. What we have in front of us is four, so I'm going off of four units to converting to six. That's what we officially have.
So, it's four units, and she already has five there?
To my recollection, that's what I was reading.
I think the building needs to be inspected.
Well, like I said, that could be a whole, a whole other topic of conversation.
What is illegally on the, on paper? Do any of you guys know?
Like I said, I have four in front of me.
Well, what is it on the plot map? Well, it's on, it's on here.
Okay, thank you. Any other opponents? Any other opponents? Hearing and seeing none? We're going to close that side of the hearing. I think the, the potential developer wanted to speak one more time?
Regarding the parking, actually, I don't think this, this unit caused the parking problem in Revere, actually. Currently, this unit already had four adults live there, and if I convert to two-bedroom apartment, I will not increase more adults, will not increase more cars. So, the parking problem in Revere is definitely not caused by this house. Okay? And also, beside this house, we do have a plenty of parking. Beside this house, we have a road already cut off, that is already abandoned, and actually, I'm taking care of that cut-off road. I'm plowing the snow over there. I'm doing, I'm taking care of the grass. So, there's already plenty of parking beside this house, and my tenants squeeze the cars inside this part, will not, have nothing to do with the city parking spots. So, this part, this belongs to my land. Okay? And beside my land, there's the cut-off road already abandoned. I'm taking care of it. I'm cutting grass. I'm, I'm, I'm doing snow plowing over there.
Thank you. And just for the, just for the adification, this is, this is a public hearing, so we're asking for the input, but also, some of these, there's not going to be a vote on this tonight, and many of these projects in front of us tonight, there won't be a vote on, and you'll be able to, if you have more detailed information, which I would definitely suggest that you provide, you should bring that to the zoning subcommittee when you do have that, so it's a little bit more easy for the...
But this, the parking issue has nothing to do with this house.
I understand. Thank you.
I'm sorry. You put anger into my house. I don't know why.
Okay.
You put anger of the parking into this house. This house has been there for many, many years.
Okay, so the, we already, we already closed, we already closed the opponent's side of the hearing, and we already heard what she had to say.
And I know none of them. I know none of them.
She was, she was answering some of the questions.
I know nobody of them.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Order.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please address the chair.
I'd like to answer the question about the loan.
Point of order.
State, state your point. Come on up. And we're going to close that side of the hearing, as we've already closed the opponent's side of the hearing. She is, she is the, she is the proponent, well, she is the developer, and she was answering some of the questions that were asked.
She can answer all she likes.
Correct.
It's a free country. That is still a city-owned piece of property. That is a road. It's never been paved. There's sewage there, so she does not, it's not her road. There is a curve, there's a curve where there's a sidewalk there. You want to take, hey, you want to have a meeting? Let's get down there, and we'll look, we'll walk this area, and I'll show you where it's a sidewalk. They've been using it for years, not as a sidewalk. Now, she can say whatever she wants, and you people can do whatever you want, but this is good old Revere. This never changes. You make fours into sixes, sixes into eights. When are we going to stop this? These are absentee landlords. They don't care about us. I've been here 75 years, and I'm tired of it. Thank you. Thank you. All right.
Closing, closing that side of the hearing. We're going to ask the councilors to speak. Please sit down. Counsel Rotundo?
Thank you. For a period of about, let's see, eight years, I drove Garfield. I know the building very, very well, and quite frankly, it's historically been an issue with parking. More importantly, to the point that buses have had problems going down there. So, whatever the discrepancy is, either I'm imagining what I went through, and you're imagining what you went through, or someone who lives in Winchester has a different perspective than we do. Now, with that said, I would like to ask that the city inspector inspect that building. By looking at the building itself, it looks like it's out of code. It looks like the railings here are out of code. I'm sure Scott, who's a carpenter from, I believe, Local 218, understands the code better than anybody else. So, if anything, it's out of code, and I would actually ask that the city look at this. More importantly, if we have city property that is not being taken care of, then we need to address that, because Mrs. Hung deserves to be serviced just like everybody else, and I believe that's what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So, could you come to the podium so I could ask you a couple of questions? So, you've never had a parking lot, parking driveway for this complex?
I showed the picture. You know, in this, in this part behind the house, we can park several cars there. We can park several cars.
Okay.
Yeah. I welcome you to go to the site to check the parking there.
Do you have a driveway? No driveway?
Uh, it's, no, this can be...
No, you're, we are parking on city, city property, right? Am I right?
No. You can check this picture. I already showed...
Point of information?
Sure.
The property by the plot map, as stated here by the City of Revere, is no bigger than .0069 feet, which is approximately 2,602 square feet.
The good thing about this house, actually, a lot of people don't have a car living there, because it's kind of like five steps to the train station. Yeah, Revere Beach. This is why a lot of people like to live around in this neighborhood. No, no car at all. So, this is why I want to make a smaller apartment, so they don't need to have a car. For the big family, they must have a car to hold families, you know?
Thank you. Any other councilors? Any other councilors wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none? So, this is going to go to zoning subcommittee, where there'll be some more details that will be discussed, and...
Yeah. I don't mind inspect, going to inspect this house, because the previous owner...
Ma'am, ma'am. Excuse me.
Already applied for the permit.
Ma'am, please. Address the chair.
Yeah.
And your turn is already done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is gonna go to zoning subcommittee on 12-4. All in favor?
Calendar item number nine. Hearing called as ordered on the application of Leon Gespenk, Brookline, Mass, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to expand a non-conforming six-unit residential use to an eight-unit residential use within the GB district at 542 Beach Street.
Any proponents?
Good evening. Attorney Laurence Catino representing the proponent Leon Gespenk on his application to change the occupancy of this unit. This was actually just a little brief history. This has been an eight-unit building. It's been assessed as an eight-unit building. As a matter of fact, we have a certificate of compliance upon the purchase of this building when my client purchased it in 2014 as an eight-unit building. So, the issue here is, we're not necessarily extending. It's a pre-existing use. We have... We did take measures to go ahead and remove any occupants from those two units, just to keep it to code within the city. And at this point, the only relief we're actually looking for, because we are in a GB district, this isn't allowed use, the only relief we would technically need is parking. My client actually owns 536 Beach Street and they would have the ability to park over there as well. Not all of the occupants of this building do have vehicles. We are very close to a bus line and public transportation. I know not everyone likes to hear that argument, but it is the case, especially in some of the smaller units. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Before we go to the questions, I'm just gonna ask if there's any other proponents? Any proponents closing that side? Any opponents?
John Benetti, 34 Dana Street. I'm against us going to an eight. She just answered your question with the parking. This is the same thing again. We're going back to this parking. B Street has got no parking as it is now. It's full. You go there any time of the day, it's full with cars. Again, out of town, we're gonna again bend to them. The city doesn't count. The residences live here, all their lives don't count. When is it gonna stop? I just don't understand what's going on here. And you know who I am. I've come to your meetings and we're talking about something else and we're not gonna bring it up right now, but this all relates to this problem. When are we gonna change the ordinances and do what we supposed to do? Two cars per unit, any brand-new buildings, and not only the brand-new buildings, I'm all in favor of the fire apparatuses, but we shouldn't be using wooden buildings anymore, especially with the kind of wood they use, because it burns quickly and we're gonna have deaths in this city. This city is not up to date with this. The ordinances from the state are from the federal government and we should change what's going on here. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other opponents? Opponents? Any other opponents closing that side of the hearing? Any councils wishing to ask any questions? Councilor Guanasso.
I think, listening to Mr. Benetti, I can speak as one of the members of the new program that we're trying to implement as resident parking for all. And Mr. Benetti was in the attendance and he came forward with very vital and important information. He not only put effort out for himself, he represented a lot of the area and some of the ideas and I look forward to his judgment in this particular matter because he's put concern into this. This isn't just one night that he comes before the city council and he sees us on TV. This gentleman appeared at a meeting where there were only six of us there. And so, with his concern and his input, I take that and weigh that very heavily. And what he states is very clear. Beach Street, as we all know it, is a very, very congested street and they have limited parking. And, you know, we can't allude to the fact that the developer is outside of the city, but we certainly could be mindful for the fact that they don't have the wherewithal, they don't have the day-to-day living process of being part of the living in that community. So, they don't bear the brunt and the pain of not only the residents on Beach Street, but all the residents of Revere will be experiencing based on the fact that if we keep adding to these major thoroughfares, we're gonna put us all in trouble in terms of traffic. So, you know, and I'm being fair. Every city in town in the Commonwealth has traffic. I mean, everywhere I went over the holidays, there was traffic everywhere I went. So it isn't just Revere that has traffic, so... And there is quite a few cars. Households have several cars per unit and that's thankfully, that's the American way. But to suggest that there's some sort of hardship involved here, there's no hardship. This is just more profiteering and, you know, and a person that owns a property, they're trying to gain more value for their property. But I think that we have to be mindful that traffic is a major input and if there is no off-street parking to accommodate this, then we shouldn't even be looking at it.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councils wishing to speak? Councilor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just have a question for the Councilor. You said he bought this as an eight-family at...
He did. He was in 2014.
How many occupancy permits were issued?
So, the issue is, is the building jacket within the city doesn't have much in it whatsoever. There, it has been...
Sorry. The issue is, the building jacket doesn't have much in it whatsoever. The... When he purchased the building, he was supplied with lead certificates that show eight units and a certificate of compliance from the fire department showing eight units as well. It is a pre-existing condition, so it's through no fault of my client's that he didn't realize that the building jacket apparently didn't catch up to the assessor's office.
Well, I'm no lawyer, but unfortunately for the owner of the property, he'd have to get a occupancy permits.
He's well aware, as a matter of...
I don't think that's gonna happen, to be honest with you.
My... Just to... Just a little bit of backstory. My client does have a property manager who's available 24 hours a day, just to answer some of the concerns that I heard from one of the counselors. So there is someone constantly monitoring this property. We are willing to be in full compliance with the city of Revere on any building codes. These units do have two means of egress and everything has been here, from what I'm seeing as far back as 1992.
Okay. I'll continue a question at the...
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councils? Councilor Powers and then Councilor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. You know, I think that in the past, we've taken two-family homes, people that had basement apartments. We've had the apartments removed by the building department because they were not in compliance with our laws and our zoning. And I think to support something like this, are the person prior to you, would be hypocritical. I just couldn't... I couldn't support that. I think that's been the problem in this city for decades, back to the '40s and the '50s and the '60s. Taking two-family homes and turning them into four-family homes. Taking one-family homes and turning them into two-family homes. It's wrong. And you get approved and you leave here, or your client leaves here and he goes home to wherever he comes from. And who gets stuck? The people that live in the city, the people that go to work every day, the people that pay taxes and the people that come home at night and they wanna find a parking space on their street. They wanna enjoy what they have of life. This is wrong. And I'm telling you right now, I don't care what recommendation comes out of any committee, I will not support this. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Just to reiterate, we do have the ability to park at 536 Beach Street, so we do have ancillary parking.
Thank you for the clarification. Councilor Rotundo.
So, I'm looking at the picture now of 542. I see... And there's six apartments in there now?
Currently, there's actually eight, but only six are occupied.
Okay, so where are the other two? Are they in the basement?
They are... They're actually not below-ground basement, but I guess you would call them lower-level units. They do have two separate means of egress, as I mentioned.
Okay. Well, I'm looking at this and there's no windows or anything in the lower...
There are windows.
Oh, there are windows?
Yes.
Okay.
They're on the side.
Maybe it's an old picture. So... Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Rotundo.
Thank you. If my recollection is correct, in the back of the apartments, in the bottom part of the building, your windows are to the side, probably about two foot by four foot, if I'm not mistaken. I've been there as an EMT almost two decades ago. And what I would tell you is it appears that they turned that from a six-family into an eight-family by turning the bottom part of the building that was above ground...
Yes.
...into an apartment. If you don't have an occupancy for it, then most likely, the apartment would be put in illegally or someone turned a blind eye to it, which I'm sure Mr. Benetti is well familiar of. What I would say, we have to provide relief for people who have, through no fault of their own, been given the ability by the city at one time to build in a two... Turn a one into a two in certain instances. This is one of those instances where it doesn't fit that criteria, where a person willfully bought the property knowing what it was. If he's a developer and a building owner, which if I'm not mistaken, he owns other buildings too.
He does.
He knows full well what he got himself into. And from my perspective, it just looks like he's just trying to get one over on us. Not gonna happen.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Zambuto.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm a little disturbed here tonight at the tone and tenure of this. I thought the procedure is that we go from public hearing, short discussion, then to committee to work out what might and might not be the case and what... I've been here a long time. Some people don't like that. Others do. The bottom line is, there are some instances that the criteria fits the situation. I'm not saying this does or doesn't, but I'm disturbed by the dismissal out of hand here. I don't think that's what this design is for. At least, that's not what I've been used to over the past 18 years. We go through the process, we go to committee, we see what's in the... What's the merits? What's the negatives? And then we decide then. Hear all the information, not the cursory public hearing. And so, I'm just a little disturbed by that tone and let's try to work things out in committee. Whether we decide in the end, it's... We can't support it, that's one thing, but to say, "I'm not supporting it because something was done in the past that might not have been right," is, I think, a terrible approach. I think we gotta take each project on its merit and work from there. And that's my little spiel this evening.
Thank you, Councilor. Well put. And with that, I'll close the side of the hearing and refer this to zoning subcommittee. What I also wanna bring up is, for the audience and the people watching on TV, is much like Councilor Zambuto has mentioned, tonight's gonna be... There's a lot of public hearings tonight and there's gonna be a lot of passionate remarks, mostly by the public, which is... This is the process and that's why, you see me up here, I'm playing a little bit of a referee. I'm trying... We're gonna try to not take one side or the other, take all the information, bring it in, put it into certain committees, and then it'll get voted on appropriately. But our job is to hear the public input from the people that are for and against it. It's not just for one side of the room and the other. So that's what we're here to do tonight. So, when I do hear your concerns, we do hear them, we understand them, but we have to keep them brief and we have to keep them professional and to the point. And that's all I'll ask. So we're gonna continue going on with this process tonight and we're gonna hear a lot of good debate and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Calendar item number 10. Hearing called as ordered on the application of Yeman Street Investment LLC, 111 Everett Ave, Chelsea, Mass, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to construct a new three-story mixed-use development consisting of 22 residential micro-units and four commercial units at 14 Yeman Street.
This time, we'll open it up to any proponents.
Good evening, councilors. My name's Corey Rhodes. I'm an attorney with D'Ambrosio Brown LLP for Team Proctor Avenue in Revere. I represent Yeman Street Investment LLC and its principals, Jamie Russo and Rick Costa. We're here tonight for a special permit to construct a contemporary three-story structure with 22 micro-unit apartments and four commercial spaces. Apartment units are already allowed at this property. This is more about revitalization, redevelopment of a key downtown property. The current structure on this property is, for lack of a better term, it's a mess. A non-conforming structure that was added on to by prior owners and we're looking to make a clean start and put a brand-new building right in the heart of downtown. This project also increases the commercial tax base, bringing four new businesses to the downtown area, activating the sidewalk for greater pedestrian use. This is also a transit-oriented property located next to three major bus lines, 116, 117, and 119. And just kinda wanna reiterate that these are micro-units. We're talking 290 to 400 square feet for the studios and 650 for the one-bedrooms. There are no two-bedrooms, there are no three-bedrooms. These are all studios and one-bedrooms and no big families are gonna be renting here. That's just not gonna happen. It's also about dedicated and professional management. Landlords who watch out for issues and act proactively, qualities that I think you know these owners really embody, those direct qualities. People that have renovated and improved countless properties in the city. We know this is going to subcommittee, like was just mentioned, and we're happy to get into more details there. And we think this is a great project for downtown and we ask for your support.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Proponents?
Chelsea Johnson, 20 Yeman Street, a butter to the right of this project. I'm in favor of it. I think it'll be pretty good for the neighborhood. I've met with the developer. He seemed pretty amenable to some of the concerns that I had early on in the process, so I wanted to give my support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents?
Can I ask one quick question? Can I find out, is there parking for this new building?
There is none listed. No. Thank you. That was a quick answer, right? No, any other pro... Any other pro... This is for a proponent?
Yes.
For proponents?
I am. I found a big issue in Revere because when you approach this big project, you... Most of them are in favor of it, but when we are small homeowner...
Point of order, Mr. President.
Like a four-unit, five-unit homeowner...
Okay.
We have a lot of...
Ma'am, ma'am, you're way off the subject here. I'm gonna ask that you sit down, step away from the mic. If you are either a proponent of this...
This project has no parking either.
So if you are an opponent, please step up during the opponent process, ma'am. Thank you. We're not taking sides on one project against another. So any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none. We're gonna close that side of the hearing. Any opponents?
I just wanna say, when are we... My name's Joe Coco, 36 Sears Street. When are we gonna learn in this city? I mean, in another two years, the city is gonna be like Times Square 24 hours a day. You can't move... You can't move in traffic now. I've been on a few of the councils up here in front of me, but they say there's nothing we can do. There's gotta be something we can do. Anywhere that there's a law, you can build on it. I've been in this city just about all my life. I've never seen anything like what's happening in the city now. And now, I hear they wanna come in with apartments in certain areas I'm not gonna mention right now. How much... It's gonna be a burden on our school system, which a year ago was supposed to be one of the best. I mean, when are we gonna learn in this city? When are we gonna start voting these people down? All they wanna do is come in our city and make money. Let's put an end to it.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Philip Russo, 175 Ridge Road. I'm here for a couple of reasons in this particular project. First, I heard him say that this is a temporary three-story building, three-stage, three-story building. Temporary-permanent is, you know, what is it really? That's first. Secondly, you're talking about four new businesses on the bottom, based right on, right on the street level. We have no parking as there is right now, and that's been a major issue here. Over the last few months, I ran for politics here, for Ward 4, and I spoke to a lot of the people. And in speaking to the people that I have been in contact with, everyone says the same thing. We all have the same issues here. I live there, I live and drive up and down the street all the time. Anyone that goes to the post office has to go up and down the street. This is where this is. There's no parking. There's nothing there. This is a major issue. Okay? It turns into safety because people are trying to fight for positions. That has to stop. We have to do something to clear this up. Downtown, yeah, it's great to have more businesses down there, but 22 micro-units, studios and one- and two-bedrooms? Let's be, let's be real, okay? Studio apartment, that's two people. They're going to come with two vehicles, or they're going to come with one? The single bedrooms, are they coming the same way? So we're doubling the people, doubling the occupants, whether they're professionals or not, we're doubling everything. This has to be taken into consideration. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
John Accarigio, 30 Graves Road, Revere. Former city counselor. I have great love for the city of Revere, but we can't keep going the way we're going with traffic, parking. It's a big public safety issue, and now the winter is coming, and we don't know how much snow we're going to get. People can't even be able to park right now because they do business at the post office, city hall. It's very, very congested. People can't even get around right now. It took the other, me the other day, almost an hour to get down Broadway. And the units, it's too big, the neighborhood doesn't want it. They've lived there all their lives and paid taxes. Enough is enough. Vote the thing down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Lampadakio, 43 Tapley Avenue. I do like the commercial components of this project, but I can't support it. The word "micro" means nothing to me. What I see is 22 units and 22 drivers. Thank you.
Good evening. Attorney David Solomon representing M&amp;R, United Realty Trust, in this matter. With regard to the obvious public, with regard to the obvious public access and safety issues, there are other issues before this board, and I'm going to refer the citizens of Revere to their own zoning bylaws and the purpose and intent and the language that is in this. This is a poster child for what's going on with regard to the zoning bylaws. The purpose and intent of the zoning, of the title are to secure the safety and public welfare of the cities of Revere. You're supposed to take into effect the statute, Chapter 40, Section 10. And it's clear that the proponent in this particular circumstance hasn't met its burden with regard to whether or not there's any kind of hardship and whether or not it would be detrimental to community. I would yield to a gentleman who has lived here for 75 years, and it's pretty clear that this is essentially an end run around the zoning bylaws of the city of Revere. And finally, I think that counsel really has to take into account, you know, whether or not, you know, is this an attempt to give the city some affordable housing, or is it about profitability? Is it about land use? Or is it about speculation by a developer who bought this property at foreclosure? Is this about a vibrant downtown? Or is it about overburdening the infrastructure of the city of Revere? And finally, again, micro-units are simply an end run to bypass the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie De Sisto, 7 Reservoir Avenue, for 57 years. Honorable counsel members, I'm happy for this opportunity, speak alongside my neighbors in opposition to the special permit application. I am one of the abudders whose property directly abuts 14 Yaman Street in the rear. Yes, there are single-family homes on Reservoir Ave., literally right up against the proposed site. So before you make any decision on this application, I invite each of you to step into our backyards and see firsthand why we are opposed to this project, a project which the Site Plan Review Committee has already flatly rejected. You'll see for yourselves why this application and all that it asks for, if granted by the council, will prop open the door for a waiver of the current setback, density, and parking requirements that this site is subject to. All of it will cause, direct onto the abudders, crowd residential property and will result in diminution of our property values. A special permit at this site will also open up a Pandora's Box, impairing rather than enhancing the status of this and other neighborhoods in Revere. First, the proposed site was rezoned from GB to CB in approximately 1983. The neighbors were opposed to that change because of the height which the CB rezoning allowed. The neighbors lost that battle, but the intent and purpose of that zoning change was to maximize the highest and best use of commercial property located in the downtown area and to disallow residential development in it. Those ordinances relative to uses, setbacks, and parking requirements in the CB zone were enacted by the council to confer protections to homes abutting the CB district, to preserve quality of life in those particular neighborhoods while facilitating commercial development that would not crowd or build on top of abutting residential properties. This special permit, if granted by the council, will potentially pave the way to undo all of those conferred protections. Despite what this application indicates, a proposal for 22 residential units in a CB zone is not in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinances relative to the CBD. Throwing a few retail units into the mix just to make a proposal like this somehow more palatable is totally contrary to the very intent of the CBD ordinances. The highest and best use of properties located in the CB zone is not residential. It is commercial, and not token commercial development like this, but bona fide development, well-thought-out and meaningful, which will generate a solid commercial base without impairing the neighborhood. The CBD ordinances also exist to prevent the absolute folly of lot-line-to-lot-line development, a lesson this city learned the hard way in the aftermath of the nightmare change-of-use special permit which was granted for the construction of 250 Broadway. For those of you who are not aware, that change-of-use special permit allowed an owner, developer to reach over into Reservoir Ave., enabling him to build lot-line-to-lot-line. Right. I'm going...
You're very eloquent, and I love hearing you speak.
Right.
And I love talking to you.
Right, but that relates to this. Okay, I'll move on. Enabling him to slice right into the heart of our neighborhood on one side. And now this proposal, which for all intents and purposes is a lot-line-to-lot-line development, threatens to slice right into our neighborhood on the other side. Secondly, the setbacks. The proponent states that this new proposal is, quote, "substantially smaller than the previous." Ask yourselves, how so? The overall footprint of the structure has barely changed. No setback in the front, lot-line-to-lot-line on either side, but now with the 10-foot setback in the rear, 10 feet, that's it. That's no wider from where I'm standing to where you're sitting. And there's only one word for all of this: unacceptable. Such a footprint will result in diminution of our property value by entirely crowding and walling in the abutting residential homes, blocking all sense of open space and privacy and blocking... The director abudders on Reservoir Ave. have the conferred protection of a 20-foot buffer in the rear, and the abutter at 20 Yaman Street has the conferred protection of 15-foot buffer on her side. And our full expectation is for this council to ensure by its action that those protections remain unmolested and intact. Thirdly, the height. The previous proposal submitted to the ZBA earlier this year showed an overall total height of 46 feet. I have the plan. Although the applicant may have shaved off one story this time around, the overall building height is still an overwhelming 42-feet high. That's only four feet lower than the previous plan. Such height will entirely engulf and crowd the abutting homes, resulting in diminution of our property values. Now, not long ago, another ward in our city had the potential of a 50-foot-high building being built in their neighborhood, and the council were there most wisely and for good reason stated, "I did not want a 50-foot building on the block." Well, neither do we over here in Ward 4. And it's as good as the same, because the only difference between 50 feet and 42 feet is this much, from my foot to the top of my hand and another foot. That's it. The new proposal is still ill-suited for the two tiny lots onto which it now seeks permission from you to be squeezed.
Mr. Sisto.
I'm almost done, Counselor, and I have about three more minutes.
I want to be fair to the whole room. We've asked only do 30, 30 seconds because of the, there's many other meetings today. I think we're all very aware that we're very much opposed.
Okay, I'll move on. Parking.
If you can wrap this up, please.
I can.
And then we'll do this at zoning subcommittee as well.
Parking. What can be said about granting a special permit for a proposal that creates 22 housing units and four retail units but provides zero parking in a neighborhood already at risk and overburdened due to the lack of adequate parking? How can anyone honestly believe that granting a special permit for this project will not create additional serious public safety hazards to pedestrians and vehicles using Yaman Street? How can this proposal even try to legitimately represent to anyone that it will, quote, "not adversely affect the neighborhood," or that it will be, quote, "a benefit to the neighborhood"? The proponent suggests a workaround to skirt the mandated parking requirements by representing that the units will be marketed to tenants without cars and that tenants will be restricted from having a car. But the tenant agreement that you have in your packets doesn't say that. It simply says that the tenant will not have no, a vehicle registered to the address. And there's a world of difference between having a vehicle registered to a particular address versus having a vehicle at all. The targeted tenants for this proposal are going to want and need a car here, because this location, despite what everybody says, offers little by way of amenities. There's no MBTA subway station within walking distance. There are no supermarkets or shopping malls within walking distance, and that's what micro-unit renters want. They want everything in walking distance. They don't want to have to take the bus to get them to the subway station, and they don't want to have to take public transportation to get them to the shopping malls and the supermarkets. The proposed workaround offers little better than zero guarantee that the development will not generate any need for parking. And lastly, this. This is what was in my packet. Maybe it's changed. The overlay, the information provided by way of this? Is this what you have?
We have it, yes.
Right, okay. I have one more minute.
Point of order. No, Mr. Sisto, we've gone way past the allotted time. And I think, I think we get the gist. I think everyone very clearly gets the gist, and this is going to go into zoning subcommittee, and it's going to continue to be discussed, and I think we'll be given more ample time...
For 57 years, you, I have, I'm going to finish it up in one more minute.
Okay, wrap it up. I can't say no to you.
I promise you, I promise you.
You're too lovely.
This is woefully inadequate. All it shows you is the front of the building. Where's the information for you about the rear of the building? Do you realize that there are massive retaining walls holding up everybody's property on Reservoir Ave.? This shows you nothing about the structure and relationship to those walls and how the back of the building is going to look, because trust me on this, the devil is in the details, and you have no details here. We're not opposed to development. What we are opposed to is development for development's sake, indiscriminate development that's inappropriate, ill-suited to the site, and detrimental to our property values and the stability of the established neighborhood. And that's what we are. We're a neighborhood there. We're not a micro-unit transit-oriented community. Most of the abudders have been there in excess of 50 years, others 20 years, and others are more newer homeowners. But we find ourselves in an environment where our properties, our homes, our quality of life is up for grabs by those who seek to maximize their profit by gobbling up properties and converting our neighborhoods into transit-oriented communities. And I'm going to say this one last thing. Each of you are Revere homeowners. Well, from one Revere homeowner to the next, put yourself in our shoes. How would you like it if this was going up in your backyard or next to you?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sisto. Appreciate that, and I think that we all do that, so appreciate your words.
Motion to recess, Mr. President.
Just a, we have just a brief recess for two minutes. Counselor Reteno, one brief recess. Thank you. Our recess is adjourned. Recession is adjourned. We're going right back into the scheduled meeting, and we're still on the opponent, opponent's side of this. Any opponents, any other opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close, oh, okay. And I do apologize, but we're going to, we're going to try and stick to the 30-second rule here.
Okay, this is, is it on? Listen, I'm 85 years old. My name is Gloria De Pedro from 17 Reservoir Ave. Now, I'm not a tough person, but I know what's going on, because I've been here for over 60 years. Now, the thing is, when these people come in and do something like this, don't you think they should meet with the neighbors and let us know what's going on first? Huh? All right. Now, the thing is, I am a director butter of this, God, it's this place. I'm a director butter, right over there with 10 feet between me and him? Forget about it. I don't want that. I am definitely opposed, and I want to tell you outright that this is a disgrace to Revere, Mass. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney.
Wayne Rhodes, 189 Coolidge Street. Just have one thing.
Ashley.
The footprint of the building hasn't changed, really, not much, as this lady over here said. Mayor Rego came out against this project himself, didn't he? In the last meeting when he was voted on this?
This is, this is opponent's, opponent's side of the hearing. I don't know what, I'm not going to speak for anyone else.
Well, Mayor Rego came out against this in the past. Now, if you guys allow a special permit for this with four commercial units and no parking, there's something wrong. Thank you. I'll make it very short. I'm a neighbor of Gloria De Pedro, and we're very upset about this. Anything you can do to help us, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just your name and address for the record. Name and address.
Joseph Volpe in 19 Reservoir Ave.
Any other opponents? Opponent?
I'm an opponent, you know, I just, I'm a homeowner here, and now I find, as the landlord here, the water bill is so high here. I don't know why. And the, for that three-unit building, for three units, the water bill in three months is $1,125.
Thank you.
I don't know how to oppose this, but I'm going to go find any way that I can oppose this.
Any other opponents? Okay, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any counselors wishing to speak? And just a reminder, this is going to go to zoning subcommittee on December 4th at 4:30. All in favor? Thank you.
Calendar item number 11. Hearing called is ordered on the application of Achara Development LLC, 30B Railroad Street, Revere, Mass., seeking permission from the Revere City Council to raise the existing non-conforming structures and construct a new six-story mixed-use structure with two commercial units on the first floor and 145 residential units on the remaining floors at 320 329 Revere Beach Boulevard.
Any proponents?
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, members of the council. My name is Attorney Lawrence Simeone, and I represent Achara Development LLC of 30B Railroad Street, Revere, Massachusetts. We, I'd written a letter later this evening, basically asking the council to continue this matter, to give us an opportunity to continue to work with the people from the St. George. On November 22nd, we had a really good meeting. I was not there, but Attorney Sappalata was there, and my client, Mr. Philbin, were there, and it was, it was a good meeting. We think that we can make some progress in addressing some of the issues that they have raised. raised. I reached out to our state representative, who was also a resident there, and she tells me that she's not going to be around on December 4th and December 11th. So I think I'm going to withdraw that request for continuance and allow, you know, and ask that we just go forward. Ms. Vincent is a resident and certainly a highly regarded member, and I'd like not to stand in any particular way of her speaking. That said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go forward if that's okay with you. Okay. So again, this Achara Development, Matt Philbin is the manager of the LLC, is seeking a special permit in accordance with 1740-030 to modify a nonconforming structure and also a special permit in accordance with 1740-030 to modify nonconforming uses. The property is 320-327 Revere Beach Boulevard. The property is located in the RC-1 district. The property consists of approximately 1.6 acres. We have it as 49,118 square feet. It has 11 parcels of land. The property is presently improved by three nonconforming structures in accordance with 1708-530. They're nonconforming because they fail in some way to meet the dimensional requirements or the off-street parking requirements of the now current RC-1 district. Two of the structures are commercial. These structures and one two-family residential building are the only structures on the locus. The structures are nonconforming specifically as to the RC District Regulation for front yard, side yard, rear yard, and off-street parking. Those are the existing nonconformities presently with the existing structures. The commercial structures also are nonconforming. Bianchi's Pizzeria is a fast-food restaurant, which is prohibited in the RC-1 district. The other restaurant bar is allowed only by special permit, and so those two commercial uses are nonconforming uses. Noteworthy is the fact that you cannot have a mixed-use project in the RC-1 district without getting some relief from this honorable board. While in the RC-2 district, mixed use is encouraged, the RC-1 district, which is now being encouraged by the municipal planning people and so forth, and which we've adopted some of their recommendations, the ordinance just requires us to come to you, whether for a special permit or some other parent permit to get in type of restaurant or retail use. The property and the project as proposed by Achara Development seeks to raise the three existing nonconforming structures and relocate the nonconforming uses, establishing a new six-story mixed-use property with 145 units and a fast-food restaurant, a restaurant, and potentially retail space as well. The fast-food restaurant and the restaurant slash potential retail space, we're juggling that issue, will be on the first floor, establishing what is known as a streetscape, allowing the boulevard and that area to continue along with other new development, to have commercial enterprises along the boulevard, making it an active and ongoing economic valid area. The particular mixed-use structure that we're dealing with will have the two commercial units that I spoke of. As to the 145-unit building, 55% of those units will be one-bedroom and studios at a market rate of $1,985 to $2,185. 42% of the units will be two bedrooms at a market rate of $2,850, and 3% or five units, one unit on each floor, is at least proposed at this point to be three bedrooms at a rental rate of $3,500. We are proposing 188 parking spaces, which gives us an average of 1.35%, which exceeds the one-bedroom requirement in the RC-1 district. Councilors know, of course, in the RC-1 district, off-street parking is broken up. For a one-bedroom, it's 1.25%, for a two-bedroom, it's 1.75%, and for a three-bedroom, it's 2.0%. In concert with our ability to admit 188 spaces, we will be putting a shuttle service in. We are very, very close to the transit-oriented district. We're practically right on the line, and there's transit-oriented systems and facilities available. We intend to put a shuttle system to make sure that our people, especially during peak hours, get a service directly to that transit-oriented facility. We're also putting in, I'll call them zip cars or cars that one could rent by the day. So this particular demographics indicates that some of the people in this area would like to rent in an area like Revere Beach and a beautiful apartment, may look to spend more money on their housing and seek to reduce their expenditures on cars and car insurance. So offering the ability to shuttle and offering the zipcar option will fill a need that they have. One of the key elements of the mixed-use proposal before you is that we want to not only establish a strong economic corridor, if you will, along Revere Beach, but we also want to keep a little bit of the history. You know, we've been fortunate that we've had Kelly's for many years, and in this particular location, the Bianchi Pizzeria has been around since 1950, back when Joe Nemo was on the Revere Beach Boulevard. They have stood the test of time, and we feel very confident that they will join with us, they're even here today, to continue that long and great tradition that they have created and earned, and they will be on the first floor. The other issue will be that we have worked with the city. Our designs are based on recommendations that we've got from the planning department. We'd like to think that we've adopted as many as we could, especially with respect to the streetscape. But at the same time, you know, we expect, and I've told Counselor Powers this, that we expect to have another meeting with the St. George. We expect to make progress on some of the concerns that they have, and we hope that when we come back to you, you may see some significant alterations, especially to the elevations and so forth. I have with me this evening Rick Salvo of Engineering Alliance. I have Cube 3, the architect firm, and our capital partner, NRP, and Carolyn Mendel, who will speak to you very briefly in order to conclude this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. For the record, Rick Salvo, Engineering Alliance, office at 194 Central Street in Saugus, Mass. I'll be brief here so we can leave the details, I think, for future meetings. But just to quickly introduce you to the site, I think everyone's pretty aware of where the property is. It's boarded to the south by the DCR on Baseball Field. The St. George is two buildings away from us. There's two multifamily structures that separate us from the St. George. This property is actually made up of nine tax map parcels totaling 1.13 acres. This building that's outlined here was the former Boulevard Restaurant, of course Bianchi's Pizza in the middle, and then an existing multifamily structure on the end here. As you can see, all these buildings are pre-existing nonconforming for side yard setback, front yard setback, and this particular building right here for rear yard setback. The proposal, as Attorney Simeoni noted, is a proposed 145-unit multifamily building, which consists of two podiums of parking, which is pretty standard for the developments that have been constructed most recently along Revere Beach Boulevard with five stories of wood frame construction above. We are looking for relief on the front yard setback so we can engage the streetscape, which helps the commercial component be able to function. We are also looking for relief on the side yard setbacks, which has a proposed 10-foot setback and rear yard setback, which also has a proposed 10-yard setback, 10-foot rear yard setback, excuse me. Access to the site is via a single driveway. Folks will come in off the Boulevard, pull into the driveway, pull in here for the upper level of parking, or drive down the driveway to the lower level of parking. That's essentially the way the building lays out. Like I said, I think we can save a lot of the major details for subcommittee. So I think with that, I'll turn it over to Cube 3 just to talk briefly about the building.
One of the things I was remiss. We asked for relief of a new nonconformity, that being the FAR, the floor-area ratio in the RC-1 district. Since the filing of the application, Mr. Salvo and Cube 3 have worked very diligently to reduce the certain aspects of the building, so we are no longer going to ask for that new nonconformity. We're drawing that request to exceed the FAR. We'll be building in accordance with the byright calculation established for the FAR, which at this point would be three times the 49,000-square-foot footprint, or approximately 147,350 square feet of building. The project is estimated to be somewhere in the $50 million investment altogether when you add land cost, engineering, and construction. Let me introduce you to this young lady. She can take it from here.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Talia Canistra with Cube 3 Studio. So just quickly about the architecture of the building. It's a U-shaped footprint above the parking structures. There's two parking levels with five floors of residential above. The lower level is mostly below grade, so from the street level, you would only see the one and the residential above. On top of that upper parking level, there is a raised courtyard as an added amenity for any future tenants. At that ground level, we have a rendering here showing what that street edge would be. We really wanted to activate it, make that friendly street edge that exists, and just amplify that. So the residential entry would be on the corner to the left of Bianchi's, and that would have any amenity spaces and leasing areas for the residential building, connecting up to all the residential floors. And then there's also additional amenities on the courtyard level and on the topmost level overlooking the beach. Just from an aesthetic standpoint, we wanted to give it a contemporary feel, really activate that edge, but give it its own identity from what exists now. So that's why we're using bold colors and giving it more of a stronger massing, where it touches the ground and the towers go up on the corners. So if you have any other questions, I'm here to answer them, and thank you.
So at this point, just so the council knows, we do have a traffic study, which we'll be presenting to the subcommittee, shadow study, and we expect to delve in a little bit more detail, hopefully with some alterations that we successfully negotiate with our principal abuddi of the residents of the St. George. That would go to subcommittee at this time.
Thank you. At this point, any other proponents?
Mr. President, Honorable Members, James Sipoleta, 385 Broadway, Revere. I represent NRP. They're the equity partner in this development. They're a national developer, and I think they're the sixth-largest construction company and the seventh-largest developer in the United States. With me to my right is Carolyn Mendel. She's a principal with the company, and she would like to tell the councilors, please, just briefly why NRP thinks that this is a win-win situation for the city and all involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, everyone. I'm Carolyn Mendel, as Jim mentioned, VP of Development here in Boston. And my office is in Chelmsford. I am local. I've been here for many years doing multifamily development. I've loved Revere for many years and lived nearby for quite some time, and the NRP group is extremely excited to come into a community like this and have an opportunity to do a really thoughtful project in a close-knit community that is also so close to Boston and on the beach. So there's a lot to offer here. We're really excited about working with the city and working with the community members to put together something really great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
John Accaragio, 30 Graves Road, Revere. I'd like to speak in favor. I think this is a very nice development, especially with the Bianchi family. They've been doing business there for over 70 years, very highly respected family, and we want to keep the pizza places, pizza place there. They've been known not only locally but nationwide for their pizza, and hopefully we can keep this historic business there along with the apartment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Attorney Jeffrey Rosario-Turco. I'm here representing Robert Butchy, Bianchi Senior, and his son, Robert Junior. It's a privilege to stand before you in support of the project on behalf of my client, Bianchi's Pizza. As has been said by numerous people tonight, Bianchi's Pizza's been part of this city for almost 70 years. It's the longest continuously operating business on Revere Beach. I have fondly recall my days hanging out on Revere Beach and going to get a Bianchi's slice of oversized pizza down there. The Bianchi's family, over the last 15 years, have seen numerous developers approach the owner of this site and talk about developing it, and none of the former owners of this site, none of the former developers have ever approached Bianchi's about keeping them there to keep this important Revere institution as part of our city. The current developer is the first developer that came and recognized the importance of Bianchi's Pizza to Revere Beach, not just to the beach but to our city. You know, Tony Bianchi started making pizzas, believe it or not, at Domino's as a young kid before he started out, and Bianchi's at one point had three restaurants on Revere Beach. They've been at their current site since the late 1970s. And so I think on behalf of the Bianchi family, we urge you to support this project when you send it to committee and when it ultimately comes back. We also want to thank the developer for recognizing that when they come in, they don't just come in and try to knock things down and change the makeup and complexion of the community, but that they recognize an institution as important as Bianchi's to the community. So thank you very much for the opportunity to be heard, and on behalf of the Bianchi family, we urge you to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Name and address for the record.
Deborah Habig-Schnick, Attorney Deborah Habig-Schnick, 350 Revere Beach Boulevard. Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of the city council, I'm an owner of, since 2002, I own two units at 350 Revere Beach Boulevard, which faces the proposed building. I have my law office in that condominium based on the condominium bylaws and a residential unit. I have to object to this board going into private session and considering proposal of this structure. I object to the increased traffic that we owners have experienced.
Point of order for the record. Please let it be noted that this council has not gone into private session.
Correct. Thank you.
Point that you do, I'm sorry.
It would be a publicly aired zoning subcommittee.
Mr. Vice President, further point of information. We had a meeting at the St. George condominium this past week in the room they have down there, and there were probably at least 40 people that attended that meeting along with myself and representative that lives in that building. So... So there's nothing being hidden here, and I'm going to be very vocal on this, and I'm going to express my concerns right after when the councilor's called on. Thank you.
With all due respect, Mr. Powers, I was unable to be there because I left for the holiday weekend, and I don't represent any of those owners, only myself as a two-unit owner. I object because of the increased traffic that we are experiencing and that I have experienced since 2002. I grant the wonderful job you have done on the beach. The sand, the improvement, the events that you have held have increased and drawn people to this town and have made it something. We can't yet compete with Hampton Beach in New Hampshire, but I'm hoping we get that white sand at some time. I am coming to object to the building of this proposed structure of 145 units. I'm talking about a building unit. I didn't come here to talk about Bianchi's. They're famous. We all go over there and buy pizza, but that's not what this is about. It's about a proposed structure. The problem with the traffic congestion, it's increasing and it's getting worse. We have the Atlantica built, we have the Ocean Towers that were to be built, but we have a different structure. In the summer, and starting usually in April, once the weather is warm, if you enter onto Revere Beach Boulevard from Revere Beach Parkway after you leave the Suffolk Downs, you can stand, I can stand 45 minutes in clogged traffic trying to get up to Revere Street. Revere Street, as you well know, is a two-way street. I use it both ways, but I never use it going west towards the St. Anthony's area, because you can sit at that traffic light for 35 minutes and not go anywhere. We will be adding 145 units right now in the 350 Revere Beach Boulevard unit, which is known as the St. George. We have parking spaces for every unit and two for others. A few of the people have three cars, and we park on the street in the front on the westerly side. We know better than to park on the easterly side and get our cars towed. There is no parking now. Bianchi's has a driveway that allows people to go in the back. It is very congested in the summer, and you can wait two or three minutes or 20 minutes while cars are parking in order to use their facility. They're the greatest. I'm not here to complain about them. My concern is the traffic congestion that's going to increase with the placement of this 145-unit structure. So I would like to suggest that you stay consideration of this building, and I would like to suggest that you consider an engineering plan to develop a different traffic pattern that's going to alleviate the construction, the traffic we have right now, not even allowing this project to go forward until you have developed an engineering plan that can determine how we can relieve congestion now, and if you're going to put that unit in, what you're going to do with it. May I suggest, we have Oak Island Street. It's one-way, but there is the possibility with your planners and engineering forums to remove the large concrete area that's in front of Kelly's, and I have to tell you, I don't know if it's city land, or with the power of eminent domain, you could cut that area off and make that into a two-way street so that people can get out of the Revere Beach Boulevard area, not only with Revere Street. And my second suggestion is, under an engineering plan, we never had a rotary put in, I guess because of the level of the land at Revere Street, but using one of the other streets that exist on 1A that could go across, maybe with a variance under the new waterfront park and a bridge that would relieve congestion. I face the south and I face the entire west, having two units. When there's a fire call, the fire department, you can hear them coming all the way down by the police department. The police, you can hear coming, and then we look out the window to see if our building has a problem, and you see the fire department trucks standing there because of the congestion, because of the beach traffic. People's lives are at stake. The building's investments are at stake because of the congestion. We need to consider this before we add another structure to this.
Understood.
So I object, I object to the variances on the yard setback. We would like to see a setback further back to the side yard footage setback and the variance on the backyard setback. Thank you very much.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you. Any, yes, Councilor Tendall.
May I ask the attorney a question?
Do you want to get to the questions when we go to the council?
Okay, we'll go.
We're just going to continue on with the opponents. Any opponents?
Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. Pardon my raspy voice, I'm just getting over an illness. I'd like to commend this developer for reaching out to both Bianchi's and the residents at the St. George Building. That's very noble of them, and I appreciate them doing that. However, I must stand with my friends at the St. George Building in opposition to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Just want to remind everyone, just try and stick it to, keep it under 30 seconds. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joan Lindsay O'Hassie. I live at the St. George. I have a couple of points that I think should be brought out as far as what the application has here and what was stated here tonight, and their conflicts and some of the information. On page eight of their application for the special permit, they indicate here under number 14B, it says the facilities will not overcrowd the existing parcels and buildings thereon. Well, by seeking side setbacks, rear setbacks, and front setbacks, variances, I beg to differ with that. And on number four on that same page, it says that the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood for the following reasons. A, sentence two, it says it will not substantially generate residential traffic or activity. That to me is a blatant misconception as far as what we're hearing for tonight. And the only thing too is the number of parking spaces. They indicate here that they're going to produce, they're going to provide 188 spaces. In their development drawing that we had to go to the city to get a copy of, it indicates that they're going to have 174 spaces, and that equals 1.20 parking spaces. That is below what is required for single-family, I mean, a one-bedroom house, not a two-bedroom, not a three-bedroom. It provides for no parking, as indicated, for visitors, and it does not provide parking as indicated for the definite two possible for commercial establishments. So those are areas that are going to significantly impact the development as is. Again, they did come and meet with the St. George. They took away a lot of information, a lot of the concerns that a lot of the residents had, and we're encouraged that they want to meet again with us. But at this time, these conflicts in the written word and the spoken word tonight speak volumes, and I really caution you or employ you to hold any type of decision until these are clarified in one way or another. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other opponents?
Ralph DeChico, 49 Washington Street. I am against this proposal. Number one, I have a feeling that they reach out to Bianchi's because they know the feeling of this city does not want apartment buildings this size, and they're trying to pacify us by reaching out to Bianchi's to saying that they're going to leave them there. The beach cannot afford another big development like this. You cannot get down Revere Street. We fought for where the Surf Club was and tried and stopped that, and that was smaller. You cannot get up and down Revere Street. God forbid, like somebody said, if we had an emergency, fire apparatus, police apparatus cannot get down there. They say that they want to make an amenity for the city and help beautify the beach there. This is a detriment to the city. We cannot afford to put an apartment building there. Nevertheless, they have one-bedroom studios, two-bedrooms, and three-bedrooms. Our school departments cannot handle that. The Paul Revere School right now is already 150 kids over capacity. Where are these kids going to go? You can't tell me that they're not going to have children coming in there. You're going to have apartments that are going to be $3,500, $2,500. You're going to have families in there. No matter what they try telling you that they're not, they are, they're going to have families in there. My question is, by right, can they put in an apartment building there, or is this something that we can stop by not doing the variances? If they had the thing that they wanted to do, something for the city, I would say that an apartment building is not, that's not the right place. It's right at the end of the Boulevard, and right now it's congested. Could you imagine how much congested it's going to be with that being right at the end? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Representative Vincent?
Hi, Rosely Vincent, 350 Revere Beach Boulevard. I'm not opposed per se to responsible development, but I am opposed to overdevelopment. I have some issues with the proposed project, first being, and you've heard it all night long, is parking and traffic. There's certainly not enough parking for 145 units, plus the fact that 145 units, I believe, is way too large for the site. Just for comparison, I didn't measure with a ruler, but I did a walk-through. The Atlantica is similar in size to the proposed site, and the Atlantica has 81 units. So 81 units on a similar size is responsible development, is something that enhances the city. I have a problem with 145 units. I think that's way too many units for such a small area. Front and back setback, it is right on the street. The city requires a 20-foot setback, yet this development is directly on the street. I haven't, I think that could pose an issue. Rear setback is 30 feet. This development wants it to be 10 feet. I think the time has come that we really need to put in perspective what is really good for the city. And I too love Bianchi's Pizza, but I don't think we should be granting development based on the fact that we like Bianchi's Pizza. Thank you.
Any other opponents?
Again, I'm a landlord, a small landlord of six to eight Garfield, and when somebody mentioned I'm a developer, I want to say I'm only a small landlord. I'm not a developer. And I'm here opposed any big project in Revere. And basically, because I feel it's my first time to attend a hearing in Revere, and I feel, I feel people hate small landlords like us. And when I mentioned I only add two words in my apartment.
Ms. Wang, I'm going to ask that you step away from the mic. We understand you're opposed, and you seem to be settling some sort of personal vendettas. You came here before us for a special permit, and you went to a city council hearing. That's it. Nothing has been voted on, and you're acting very improperly and emotionally and totally unprofessional for a potential developer, wannabe developer in this city.
I'm not a developer.
So I'm asking you to step down from the mic. I'm going to ask that you leave the council chambers immediately, or we're going to have to contact the police to have them remove you. Step away from the chamber.
I worry about big project will have bigger water conception.
Please, please leave the chambers. Please leave the chambers. Please leave the chambers before we call the police. Any opposed? Any opposition? Wow.
Wayne Rose, 189 Coolidge Street. I have a couple of questions. With the ballpark on the side, how much room is there going to be in between that building and the ballpark? And is there any parking for this ballpark?
Councilor Tendall.
Thank you. My understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Rosely Vincent is going to be, because I have asked the developer about fixing the park, is it my understanding that you'll be securing some state funding to fix that park?
We have talked with the state delegation and with DCR, and we're talking about putting some investments into the park. As of right now, we don't have anything concrete. It's all still in the talking stage, and I have not spoken or made any arrangements with anyone other than talking to the state delegation.
So I have asked the developer to consider actually fixing the park and so forth, and it was intimated to me that you had proposed possibility of the state doing anything. Would you be opposed to the developer doing anything instead of using state and people's money?
Well, I don't think that's actually a fair question. Again, it's like keeping Bianchi's. So are you suggesting that instead of me being opposed to such a large development that it would be okay then to have the developer put in a park and that would compensate? I'm not quite sure what you're under, you know?
Well, again, that's part of mitigation. We would ask the developer to mitigate.
And would they mitigate parking?
For example, please, if I can speak.
Sure, I'm sorry.
For example, like buying a parcel of land next to the property in lieu of support, things of that nature. But with that said, you know, there are a whole bunch of components to the issue. So whether that be putting Bianchi's in there, buying a piece of property to help expand the property, to add parking, or for that matter, fixing the park to help ingratiate the area, no different than what they had did at Shaw's and things of that nature. It's part of the process.
I can't imagine what property that they would be purchasing for parking. That area, I don't know if you're familiar with that area. That area is so congested right now.
I'm actually very familiar with it because in the back, the state hasn't cleaned up the area in the back there off of that of the city regarding the, not the wetlands, but actually the aqueduct that carries water back and forth, that prevents a storm surge. You can ask Joe, because I spoke to him about it recently.
Okay, I will do that.
You know he's the boss on that.
I will do that, but I don't believe that whether or not they improve the park should be a reason to grant all kinds of special variances. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Vincent. Mr. Rose, the exact setback to the park is, I want to say 20, is it 20 feet? Would you like, Mr. Simeoni?
And they're looking for a side setback, aren't they?
To address Mr. Rose's question, the, some of the existing structures have setback deficiencies. They're nonconforming, so we're again asking that we replicate some of that. The side setback against the park is, would be 20 feet, and we're proposing 10 feet. Anybody does a little research of construction in that area will find that, I believe it's the St., I believe it's the Atlantica, has approximately a similar distance from St. George and a similar distance in the rear. Clearly, one of the reasons why developers do this is in order to keep the building low and rather than a high-rise building, which would impact, in this case, many, many people in the St. George who own very expensive units on the left-hand side of the structure.
Thank you. Rose?
So then they want to bring it to 10 feet, which if an ambulance has to get down there to tend to somebody in the park, they're going to have trouble turning around, or any fire apparatus that pulls into that place. They're going to have to sit on the beach and walk down into the ball field. Is that what you're saying?
I don't know the egress of the park is on that side, but the entrance is on the back end, I believe, but I think I understand your concern with the setback.
On the right-hand side, if you look at the schematics and the site plan, we have about 20 some-odd feet. We have to create an opportunity for city vehicles, these private public works vehicles, to get behind the site, and superintendent has looked at that. And, um, superintendent has looked at that. He hasn't approved it, but he, you know, we're, we have to, it's not a, it's not guessing. We have to make sure that someone can get in. If they can get in through that site, they certainly can come around the back and make access to any park that might be available, if in fact the park doesn't have any access on their own.
Thank you for clarification. Only one more question.
There's 188 parking spots. Does this, that includes Zipcar's parking spots?
When you said 188?
That's what you said.
Yes. The 188 parking spaces does not include the Zipcar spaces. Those will be in the commercial area.
Thank you. Any, any other opposition? Anyone opposed to the project? Hearing and seeing no others, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. The councilors wish to speak. Councilor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do represent the area. I'd just like to bring everyone up to a little enlightenment here this evening. We had a proposal for the Cove site from a development company, 73 units. I was adamantly opposed to it. It was turned down, and they can put in 51 units as a matter of right. I had two subsequent meetings with MIPA and DEP, and I voiced my concerns very strongly, that I did not want that building built there at that size. We are, right now, uh, waiting to hear. I haven't received any final notice. But I bring that up because we're at a bottleneck on Ocean Avenue. 51 units coming up Revere Street, another 145 or 44 units proposed on the boulevard. 61 of those units, according to the math that the attorney, uh, gave us, 42 percent, I believe he said, would be two and three-bedroom units. We just heard a, a comment here this evening that the Paul Revere School is overcrowded. And I believe that because I was at the Veterans Day ceremony, and you couldn't walk in there in the auditorium. Now, how many kids do you think would come out of 61 units? Dare to say probably 40 or 50? Bianchi's Pizza, great institution. I've eaten there many times. Love the place. Probably the best pizza around. But you know something? That's no reason to allow a permit for 145 units by this city council or anybody. This doesn't just affect the St. George. Talk to people down in Oak Island. Talk to people in the Point of Pines. Talk to people at the other large units on the boulevard. I got the message. I got the message during the last election. They don't want it. My advice, my advice to the developer, do what you can as a matter of right. Keep Bianchi's Pizza there. Put in a nice restaurant similar to what the Brown Jug did in Chelsea. They moved from one location, they have a nice restaurant now, and they serve more than pizza. Put a nice convenience store right beside it. You really wanna do something for this community, start right there. I think it would be a great thing. But again, do as you, as you can as a matter of right. 144 units or 145 units would devastate the traffic pattern in the morning, perhaps even in the afternoon, particularly on a hot summer busy day. We just voted this evening, uh, we're gonna be voting for, uh, a new ladder truck, I think a million point six. We're gonna need that ladder truck, and we're probably gonna need another ladder truck before all this is over. We've got a fire station down on the northern end of the beach that's closed. And as a matter of fact, it's deteriorated so much that we're probably not gonna need a million dollars to rehab it, but probably 2.3 or 2.5 million dollars to rebuild a new fire station down there. And that's something I've suggested to the mayor, and I hope he's listening, I'm sure he is. This is a project, the developer is a nice guy. He has a hotel on American Legion Highway. Did a great job turning that building around. But you know something? This is a different situation. I wish I could, in all good conscience, support this, if it were something as a matter of right, with maybe a small variance or something like that. But I can't support this. And I'm letting my colleagues know tonight that I will not be supporting this. It's, it's something that's too overpowering for that end of the boulevard. Drive up from the Point of Pines on a hot summer night, and when you get, when you get to Revere Street and Ocean Avenue, that hill that goes up where you can go west or, or you can go south, think of how you sat there for a half an hour or 45 minutes just to get to that point. It's 100 percent wrong, and I cannot support this, and I will not support it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselors, any other councilors wishing to speak? Hearing seeing none, we're gonna, um, we ask, oh, Councilor Zamburo? Council Rotondo?
Thank you. I'm hearing that this property is too big for the parcel that it's on. One would make that same statement based upon the size and the current units at the St. George. One could also make the same commentary, which was widely supported for the beach house down the other end of Revere Beach. Some people say, "The heck with Bianchi's." There are some economic situations that go beyond what is being seen here regarding Bianchi's. In fact, I've been involved with that, because I believe saving Bianchi's i- is important. You know? What people also don't understand is that currently, that entire site is not conforming, meaning it is incorrect. The sides, the back, everything, it's incorrect, is not proper. I do, I do have a question for the attorney. What could be built currently as a matter of right? Meaning, you don't need to come to the council, and you build it the way it is. Mr. Simeoni?
Okay. As to the amount of residential units, if we were to build within the setbacks, probably, you know, have to go as high as 12 stories, we could build 187 units, maybe even 200, depending on the, the number of square foot per structure. You know, people talk about the Atlantica. The Atlantica is condos. They're bigger units. Condominiums are always bigger units than rental units. So it's, you know, it's like sleight of hand. Oh, you've got 50 units, but the units are 550 square feet or 750 square feet. So you would have, the other thing you have to understand is you can't, you cannot do mixed use by right. So somebody cannot build by right the mixed-use concept that you have there now.
No, is that why you're here? Because you want to add commercial space?
We do. We wanted, you know, it's been recommended by the planning department. We agree wholeheartedly, um, that to make Revere Boulevard a vibrant streetscape, that this is, this is, we're one of a group of, I mean, I understand GBX just came, and they're offering commercial on the first floor. This is something the gentleman called Blackstone, um, developed as a concept many, many years ago, and one after another, counselor. Towns and cities like Saguas are adopting the idea of commercial on the first floor and residential on the other.
It's what they do in California and Europe, but that said, my other question is, uh, as I had spoke to as a matter of right, um, if you, if you had to walk away and not do the Bianchi's, you could build this at, what, 180 units, you said?
About 187 to 200, again, depending on the size.
No, I've actually looked at the developer's equity partner, which by the way, I'm still waiting to hear from, um, Suffolk Downs, him, to provide that to us. So knowing the equity partner, knowing the developer, um, people have said, well, he can't go up the 12 stories, he'd never pay for it. Well, I, I would like to tell you, uh, I'm not sure about that, but that's not the issue here. For me, the issue is, what are we doing? If, if we're going to stop people from developing, I wanna ask you why you didn't support me in my moratorium four times. I wanna know. I wanna know every single person out there, veterans in politics, why didn't you support it? Why did you support Shaw's? Where were you when Shaw's was being built? Where was your voice? I wanna know. So why is this subject different than the others? I wanna know from every single person why you change your heart. Why is it okay to build 195 units at Shaw's and not here? I wanna know. Excuse me.
Okay, hang on. I appreciate, it was a rhetorical question. It's, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop that there. It was a rhetorical question. I appreciate you getting up wanting to answer it. I think there's a lot of people that wanna answer it, counselor. I appreciate your information.
Then we should go into a moratorium, because with all due respect, Mr. President, we have 11,000 units that are possibly gonna be coming over in Suffolk Downs.
Correct. And it's a whole nother, it's a whole nother subject. Tonight, we're talking about this one project. Let's continue, let's stay on this one project.
Well, no, they, they, they all come down to zoning. That's what this comes down to.
Let's stay on this one subject.
If I could, Mr. President.
Council, Council Zamburo, did you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't wanna be a one-trick pony, and I don't wanna talk about procedure up here, but I have to do it, because lately, we've been straying from procedure, and I, it bothers me. I haven't decided which way I'm voting on this project, because I don't have all the information. I never, I never make a snap decision, because there may be some neighbors that have problems with it. And I've taken a lot of heat up here, and I voted for Shaw's. I made it a better project than it was. I, I took, I took a project that was, was a decent project. I downsized the building, cut a floor off the building, put language in the special permit that there would, there would never be anything but a hotel, the hotel could never be converted, and I got 100,000 in mitigation money for Donnelly Square. Now, I don't know what's available for mitigation money in this project, and I don't know that the neighbors at the St. George will ever be satisfied with the end project, but that doesn't mean I won't vote for it. It doesn't mean I will vote for it. If it's a good project and it's good for the city, I will vote for it. But the bottom line is here, the, the procedure is set up here, so we get the basics, we've gotten the basics here. We've heard from a lot of the opponents what their, what their, uh, concerns are. Some of that may be mitigated by the developer, some of it may not be able to be mitigated. The bottom line is, in the end, I'm gonna decide, is this project better for the city of Revere or not? Now, if I could have stopped, the, the project up the other end of the beach, I thought was, was too big. I don't know how many units are up there, but I, I know one thing. It's certainly a lot more than 145 units.
A point of, a point of information, Mr. President. I can tell you how many units are up there.
How many?
234 units, and 60 some-odd percent are one-bedroom and studios, and the guy that's doing it is a great developer.
Thank you for the point.
He did the children's satellite hospital in Wallfam. Thank you.
Thank you for the point. 265 units.
Council Zamburo, I, I think we get you the gist, and you're right with, when you're talking about, uh, the, the, the form of the meeting and what it should and should not be. Any, any further comments on this subject?
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that, uh...
Everyone's gotten a little emotional tonight, wouldn't you say?
I, I would say that.
All right, so let's finish it up. How about we wrap this one up?
Tensions are awfully high here. But the bottom line is, let's get all the facts, let's weigh the pros and cons, and let's make an informed decision. Not a snap decision, not a quick, "No, I'm not for this because some neighbors are not for it," or "No, I'm for it because the neighbors are for it." Yes, I'm for it because the neighbors... No, let's do what's best for everybody, for the entire city, for all the taxpayers in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Patch?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Vice President. Um, I wasn't gonna, I was gonna save my comments, uh, for the committee meeting, but, um, I just want the people out there to know how I feel. I was one of the, uh, the three to vote no for, uh, for Shaw's. I, I backed the Ward 1 counselor, and I backed the Ward 5 counselor when, uh, they wanted to put apartments on the Riverside, and, and the neighbors, I backed. I've been, uh, pretty consistent, uh, with, um, how I, I feel, um, about the, uh, the buildings. But, uh, when it comes to the boulevard in Ocean Avenue, um, I, I feel it's, it's all councilors, all wards, all my constituents in Ward 6 is, uh, at their beach. The same as it's for, uh, Ward 4, and 3, and 2, and 1. I feel that, uh, as most, when you go away on vacation on the, in the ocean, most of the, uh, the, the buildings are either, either residential or, um, uh, rentals or condominiums. And I kind of, uh, go along with that feeling. I, they, I think they tend to stay occupied longer and don't turn it to Section 8. And I feel here at this site here, that, uh, I'm undecided on how I'm gonna vote, but I know the owner, um, from what he did at the, uh, the hotel on American Legion Highway, as a police officer, I spent many time in that hotel before he, uh, he bought it and turned it into a first-class hotel. I'm waiting to see. Hopefully, we can come with an agreement with the, uh, if, if the neighbors of the St. George, if they can, uh, work out some kind of agreement, we come out with a traffic plan, um, this is something that can be worked out. Uh, I think we should give them time, and, uh, when it's all said and done, we'll take our vote. But hopefully, we keep the hostilities down, and, uh, we can get, uh, down to work and, uh, maybe accomplish something here. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor McKenna?
Point of information, uh, to my counselor on my left-hand side. So I sit here, and I'm very emotional, because for a couple of times, I've heard that you negotiated for $100,000 for Donnelly Square, where it was me, and I've kept mute about this, that I negotiated for $100,000 for Donnelly Square and gave it to you, because I was voting no for it. And I'm just upset that you keep saying that you negotiated the $100,000 where I gave it to you, where a lawyer told me to. I know. I just, I'm very upset.
Counselor McKenna, I'm not sure with this. Let's take this, let's take this off, off of this here. This is, there's no bearing on this conversation. Correct.
Mr. President?
Any other, any other councilors? Yes?
I see we put this in zoning and continue the harmonization and zoning.
Yep, we're gonna, we're gonna, um, ask that, that this gets, it's gonna be going to zoning subcommittee regardless, so all in favor of zoning subcommittee? Thank you. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk, I ask that we take, um, the mayor's community... Madam Clerk, I ask that we take the mayor's communications out of order. Permission to suspend rules? Suspension of rules?
Calendar item number 18, communication from the mayor regarding the city of Revere, FY 18 to FY 22, capital improvement plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. As the city council is well aware, our last meeting, I gave a little bit of a preview of the capital improvement plan that we would be putting before you tonight. And in that capital plan, we plan to invest $25.9 million in capital improvement citywide. And this figure does exclude a number of things, including a new high school, which we sorely need, and a new DPW building that we sorely need. But aside from those two items, we wanted to make sure that we put together a plan that strives to balance the many significant and competing infrastructure needs that our city has, including and not limited to city facilities, parks, open space, roadways, sidewalks, school facilities, and vehicles and equipment. The, the outline that you'll get and the, the presentation that you will receive from the Collins Center tonight will be a lot more detailed to the preview that I gave you earlier a couple of meetings ago. So the fact is, this is going to be a five-year rolling plan. So you'll see that there are, there are projects for, for the next five fiscal years. And as we go through each year, we're going to continue to update and with feedback from the council, we'll figure out what to prioritize and, and make sure that at the end of the day, our department heads and the city is contemplating and planning for multi-year projects and not just doing things as they kind of come up on an emergency basis. With that, I am going to turn it over to folks from the Collins Center to walk through the presentation that we have provided. I know there's some AV, you know, usage that we'll be, we'll be including and there is a packet that I believe that you all have. And with that, I will ask the folks from the Collins Center to come on up. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, members of the Revere community. My name is Monica Lamboy. I'm a senior associate at the Edward J. Collins Jr. Center for Public Management at UMass Boston. I'm here with my colleague, Tony Teresi. We've been working with the city for a number of years now on a capital improvement plan. We had an iteration before you, I believe in 2015, that did not get all the way through the process. I will say, I think this is a even more comprehensive look and a more substantial look at the needs of the community. What is a capital project? Capital projects are one-time expenses or infrequent expenses on major pieces of infrastructure, roads, sewer systems, vehicles, equipment. They should have a lifetime of at least five years and oftentimes 10,000 or $15,000 minimum, but it's not a required, but it's a substantial investment. What is a capital plan? A capital plan puts all of these needs together, looks at the resources that are available, and makes strategic decisions about where to invest in the community. And as the mayor mentioned, it's a five-year plan. So it gives yourselves, it gives the department heads, it gives the community the ability to look out forward. Many large projects, whether it's a big roadway project or a new building, takes multiple years to get from design, from concept to design to construction. And having a five-year plan lets you get those pieces in place and started. Why would we do a capital plan? First of all, there's benefits in terms of costs. By being strategic, being thoughtful, we can minimize the impact on debt, we can try to get the best prices, we can avoid emergency purchases to the extent possible. As we all know with our homes, if you let the roof deteriorate and you have to get somebody out on the weekend to do work, it's much more costly than if you've gone ahead and ideally addressed it before it became a, an issue. What are the downsides of not investing in capital? First, studies have shown that for every dollar spent in preventative maintenance on buildings, $2 are saved. So by maintaining our buildings, by doing the investments early that are needed to maintain them, we avoid catastrophic failures. We've also seen studies that show that students that are working, that are studying in good quality buildings have higher test scores. So not investing in our school facilities will actually influence test scores. And there's some more statistics on that sheet. This next graphic speaks to facilities in a deterioration curve. You can see the condition is on the left and the years across the bottom. So in its initial year, any kind of building is in excellent condition. And as we move forward, the condition starts to deteriorate. If you address it early on, it's a very low cost, 20 cents per square foot to maintain. As the condition deteriorates further and further, we're looking at a multiple multiplier effect where items become much more expensive to build a new or to do a wholesale renovation. About Revere, Revere has significant infrastructure, 13 city buildings, 10 school sites, more than 20 parks and playgrounds, over 300 IT users, 117 miles of public and private roads, sanitary sewer, storm drains, et cetera. The process that we followed, we started initially in 2015, receiving requests from departments. Those were updated in 2017 to the extent that needs had changed. The, were reviewed and evaluated by us independently using a score system that looks at best practices. We did a financial analysis and identified projects. In the interim, the city council took a number of really significant steps, positive steps for capital investment. You established a capital stabilization fund that allows you to track and to put aside funds for capital. You adopted a policy to deposit at least 20% of free cash into the capital stabilization fund, really making sure that capital is in the forefront. You seeded the fund with $1 million and have engaged in a really important study of the DPW facility. Overall, we received $131 million of requests for capital improvements. I will point out that the sewer is, I believe, about 89 million of that. We have not included sewer in the capital plan before you since you are working with a separate consultant on that effort. Obviously, it's a tremendous need, but even without the sewer included, we're looking at 142, $42 million of capital requests. This is the request by funding type and Tony's going to get into it a little bit more deeply. General fund debt is what you did this evening with the fire truck. General fund pay-as-you-go is paying for the upfront with no interest charges. Water and Sewer Enterprise. Chapter 90 is the roadway grant monies provided by the state. And MSBA stands for the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which offers matching grant funds for a number of different kinds of school projects. These are the criteria that we used to review it and we'll move on to the resources that were identified.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Tony Teresi. As was mentioned earlier, I'm with the Collins Center. What I'd like to briefly go through is just a quick explanation of, of the, kind of the fundability of the, of the program. And in your, in your package is a chart that just kind of outlines the, how the money is going to be utilized to fund the program. And we've, we've tried to, we've tied the program into developing a, a, a policy of 4% investment in your, in your, in your capital projects. Very reasonable amount of money to be set aside. This program does, does not require additional funding through Prop 2 and 1/2 debt exclusions or anything to that effect. It falls within your, your existing guidelines. And perhaps the most interesting takeaway on, on this slide is the section that's highlighted in gray and it, and it really talks about the amount of money we have. That's not project money. These are the costs that you would annually appropriate to accomplish the full 30-plus million dollars that are being recommended for the, for the program. The second slide is a little bit more detail and it, as Monica mentioned, it describes kind of where the money's coming from. The first two columns are really commitments you've already made. So as you can see, you've, you've invested significantly in capital projects through bonding, that's, that's called debt service. You have some additional ones that you've already authorized. They are not excluded from this plan. You've already made a commitment to move forward with that. It's important to, to cost out what that debt service may look like at this point, their estimates. Again, the, probably the critical thing to focus on in this is the FY, the section in the middle of the slide, it's FY 2018 to FY 22. It's not in your... Okay. It's up there. It's not on the screen?
No.
Excuse me for that. Thank you. I mentioned earlier that, that the available amount of money is in excess of 5 million, but this middle section tells you where that money's coming from. And, and you've already established a, a, a very well-thought-out plan in terms of capital stabilization. And this utilizes that plan and continues that process where, where the council will, will make appropriations to the capital stabilization fund. In addition, one thing we've, we have recommended in, in many of our assignments and continue to recommend is that it's, it's important to also have within your regular operating budget, an amount set aside for capital projects. You know, projects that you really don't want to, that kind of pays you go, you have a regular source of funding. So as you can see, there's a column here where we're gradually rationing up your annual appropriation. Very doable considering the, the amount of new growth that the community is recognizing and will, will still recognize for the foreseeable future in excess of 1 to 1.5 million dollars in new tax revenue. And as I mentioned, the, the council has already established a, a very sound financial policy of making appropriations to the capital stabilization fund. This chart simply shows how that continues and that based upon the plan that's being presented, your, your process on funding the capital stabilization fund fits very well into the funding of this capital improvement program. Finally, we, in your, in your detailed CIP program, and I know you've had other discussions about the alternatives to the DPW plan, we simply want to mention that, that of the two alternatives that we know are being discussed, the, the one-phase approach versus the three-phase approach, both of those programs fit well within the funding availability in this five-year The difference is in terms of the cost of the project, the total bonding amount for the one year versus the, the phased-in approach. As you can see, the phased-in approach, although it, it costs less in the early years, is significantly more expensive in the long run because of the extra cost of the project and then the interest costs associated with that. So at least, these are early estimates, but it's roughly 22 million in total for the, for the one-phase approach and, and 25 million for the three-phase approach. But again, it fits well within the, the five-year plan that's being presented in the capital improvement program.
Before going into the fund part, which is what do we get to purchase with it, just want to really highlight a couple of things that Tony said first. With the multi-pronged general fund funding approach, it provides a really solid foundation to do the ambitious program that, that is before you, using the free cash, using the new appropriation and using the debt service that's dropping off and reinvesting it back in capital. Those are all really best practices. The other really important thing is the, the projects that we're going to talk about briefly all work with either of the two DPW alternatives that are before you. The mayor and the financial team and our group really worked hard to make sure that that was the case. There'll need to be a few modifications, but overall, they all work. So what are we talking about in terms of projects in this capital plan? We're talking about $11 million of debt-funded projects, nearly $2 million of general fund pay-as-you-go projects, some small contribution from the Water Sewer Enterprise, basically matches on some of the DPW equipment, nearly $4 million of Chapter 90, MSBA and grants and other. Overall, the general fund is funding just approximately half of this plan. So half are coming from resources outside of the city's general fund. And hats off to the staff for, for being able to identify those resources and work with us on this. This pie chart here shows again what I just said, which is about half of the proposed projects are funded by the general fund and half from an array of non-general fund sources. The next table is funding by department. We can see the schools are getting a substantial investment. The finance department is really not the finance department. It's a catch holder for investments in City Hall and in the McKinley Building. Healthy Communities Initiative has some significant amounts of dollars, as you can see. So by asset type, it's actually quite interesting that it, we can see that the investment is very balanced across different asset types, from facilities to roads and sidewalks and to equipment and to schools. It's a very balanced plan. Okay. So here's some of the fund projects and I'm happy to answer questions about any of them. Some of the largest projects include fire equipment and an investment in the Point of Pines facility. I know it was mentioned that the $1 million is probably not enough that we have in here, but it's certainly a large share to, to get that facility up and running. Parks and Recreation, Parks Facilities, 1.4 million. Specific, only a few specific parks are mentioned in the plan. Instead, what we've created is a sort of seed money for study of parks so that the city and the community can identify where you want to do the investments. And then we've put monies in to leverage, to use, to secure state grants and other grants, knowing that there's a city investment and matching that with the state grants makes the dollars go much farther. Over a half a million dollars to be invested in bicycle pedestrian, streetscapes and the staircases. This is going to be spread out across five years to allow a really thoughtful approach to, multi-year approach to making those kinds of improvements. Tree planting, $200,000. In terms of roads and sidewalks, one thing I think really stands out for this plan is not only are we building it around the state grant monies called Chapter 90, this plan even puts general fund dollars into roads and sidewalks, over $800,000, which is basically in the five-year period, so will actually be six years' worth of dollars invested into the roads because the general fund allocation is equal to one year of the grant monies. That's going to be a perceptible difference, I think, to the public when they get to there. And then school boilers, windows, roofs, et cetera. And there's a number of other small projects as well. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from any councillors? Councillor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. You just, did I hear you right when you said over the five years, $800,000 over and above the Chapter 90 money?
Yes. So the Chapter 90 money over the five years is just about 4 million. In this plan, we've built in an allocation of general fund dollars, about $800,000.
Okay. And the other thing I, I heard you mention about the, the Point of Pines Fire Station, Alderman's Fire Station, I, you know, I am very grateful for any resources that are put into getting that fire station operational. However, I, I don't know if you took into consideration the fact that some of the newer apparatus that is coming online now through other cities and towns would not, that station would not accommodate them. And the other thing too is if you sat through the meeting tonight, you heard about all of the developments going on on Revere Beach Boulevard and Ocean Avenue and throughout the city. And my feeling has always been that somewhere down the road, we may have to put a larger piece of apparatus, maybe a ladder into that station. You know, not tomorrow, not the next day, but down the road to provide the public safety aspect to the residents that live in the Point of Pines. aspect to the residents that live in the Point of Pines and the Boulevard also and Ocean Avenue, where these, we're building a lot of five-story buildings now, and a lot of those buildings, most of those buildings, if not all, are wood construction. And I think it's of paramount importance that we have a piece of apparatus that can satisfy the public safety needs of the people that will be residing in those buildings as they build up. There's still properties on the Boulevard that are going to be built. We all know that. As a matter of fact, I have a late motion going in tonight to rezone the RC-1 district from Oak Island down to 560 Riviere Beach Boulevard to confine it to six-story construction because I think it should be in conformity with the other buildings down there. There are a lot of single-family residences down there. And, you know, the beach house, which was brought up tonight, that's five floors of living space, and I think it just would be nice to have that flow continue. But again, I know that the, getting back to the fire station, I know that we've had some engineering people look at that. There was a problem with the roof that wasn't replaced in so many years and has allowed the water to seep into the brickwork. And, you know, when the water freezes, what happens? It expands out, and these are problems. So, again, I'm very grateful to the mayor and to the Collins Center for that recommendation, but I would like to honestly see it go a little further. Thank you.
Through the chair. The way we've structured the project, in fiscal 2019, there's $100,000 invested in this question, and you had a lot of really good technical questions about the size, the equipment or apparatus at that location. I think that $100,000 will be able to get you a really tremendous analysis to consider what the future is if you are not able to identify resources even earlier. There is $100,000 to start with to ask those questions. And then, because it's a little further out in the plan, there's time to build that investment in that's right-sized for the solution for the location.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors wish to speak? Council Rotundo?
Thank you. I will have to say, I did read this. It's very well-prepared. You should follow the expertise that's provided to us. I applaud the mayor for pushing this forward, and I think if we don't follow it, we'd be foolish. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Thank you for your presentation. Very nice. Appreciate it. Back to regular business, please. Oh, I would, I mean, this will be placed on file. Communications? Place a file.
Next item on the agenda is the Appointments Subcommittee Report.
Mr. Vice President, earlier this afternoon, the Appointments Subcommittee met. We had four applicants for various positions before us, the first being communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of John Lopes, one to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Mayor, don't leave. We might want you to swear in, we might want you to make arrangements to swear in the two new appointees to the Board of Appeals based on the fact that the chairperson has recommended that we get that done before Wednesday, so you can make arrangements with them. Thank you, sir. And next, we had communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Arthur Pelton to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And Arthur's going to be an alternate on that particular board. Then, we had communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Robert Bint to the Commission of Disabilities. And then, finally, we had the appointment of Vanessa Beasella to Revere Cultural Council. The Appointments Subcommittee met, and we voted out favorably all four requests. I ask that the city council take up all crests at once. If there's any objection, we can take that one up separately. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
So, motion to approve all four appointments? All in favor?
Council President, I accidentally skipped ahead on the agenda. We need to take up unfinished business. Calendar item number 12, communication from the mayor relative to the adoption of the eligibility factor for Clause 41(c)(1/2) for residents aged 65 and older.
Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Mr. Vice President. As you, as the council is well aware, as you all know, earlier this year, the voters of the city of Riviere adopted or allowed the city to provide a 10% residential tax exemption to our seniors. This final vote of the council is a formality to allow for the adoption of the age eligibility, which would be 65 and over. If you have any questions, you know, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions? Motion to approve? Oh, sorry, roll call.
Mr. Vice President, bear in mind, we only have seven members present, so this is in, do we need eight votes or we need six? Simple majority. Thank you.
Madam Clark, simple majority?
That's what the law states.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call.
Shall the city council adopt the eligibility factor for Massachusetts general laws, Clause 41(c)(1/2) for residents aged 65 and older? Council Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Council Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Council Novoselfsky is absent. Council Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Council Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Council Zambudo is absent. And Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the clause has been adopted. And calendar item number 13, communication from the city engineer requesting funding for construction material disposal.
Yes. The reason for this request is because there was a water project that was covered by the MWRA funds. However, the portion that was not covered was the amount of $160,000 for disposal of the debris that they took out while they were doing the evacuation and excavation and the work at this site, at these sites, various sites. So, what we're looking for from the city council tonight is, I just want to correct the language of this communication. It's not an authorization, it's not asking for a transfer, it's asking for an additional appropriation from the water, so a fund to the project account, which is on the communication. So, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any councils wish to speak? George, I just had one question. So, from my understanding is this is soil and contaminants in the ground that have to be disposed of properly?
That's correct.
That's where the extra funding is?
That's right.
So, obviously, this is something that we have to do, and we're going to have to pay for it, and it's not cheap. We all understand that. My only curiosity is, and I'm not, pardon me, I'm not very familiar with the project, what the project was, but is there any way for us to go back and find out who the contaminant, contaminee was? And maybe?
No, you can't do it at that time because it's from areas from all over the city.
Okay.
Or what may be the reason for the contamination or the type of debris it is. So, it's not something that we can go back and do. You can't do some sort of forensic study about whether or not, who contaminated the dirt, but we just know it was contaminated and has to be disposed in a certain way.
Understood. I appreciate that. Thank you for the feedback. All right. Roll call. Actually, we're going to have to table this. We only have seven councils left tonight. Two, four, six, seven. Oh. Scratch that, we're going to need six. Roll call.
Shall the city council approve a transfer from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund to the, to project account 43081-58000 in the amount of $160,000? Council Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Council Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Council Novoselfsky is absent. Council Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Council Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Council Zambudo is absent. And Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. Just to clarify for the residents, that is an additional appropriation and not a transfer.
Thank you, councils.
I've been informed by Mayor Rego that we need to take an additional vote for the 41(c)(1/2) exemption clause. The request would be increasing the exemption from 5% up to, it's going to be 10%, and that would require a roll call vote.
Make the roll. Mr. Mayor, can you elaborate on the 41(c) vote?
So, the vote that was taken allowed for the eligibility to be brought down to 65 and older. There needs to be an additional vote taken by the city council to allow us to give a 10% residential tax exemption to seniors. The state law, the minimum is 5%, but we can go up to 10% if there's a vote of the council to do that, and that's what we're requesting.
Roll call, please.
Shall the city council adopt the, excuse me, shall the city council allow the increase of exemption percentage up to 10% in regards to the 41(c)(1/2) exemption? Council Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Council Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Council Novoselfsky is absent. Council Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Council Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Council Zambudo is absent. And Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the percentage increase has been approved. On to motions. Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Council Novoselfsky. The mayor requests National Grid to increase the streetlight wattage to 400 watts on two Cobra Lights on Pole 4316-1 and the Shirley Ave, Minnesville parking lot. The poll feeds from Pole number 4316 at 64 Dehone Street.
And Council Novoselfsky was asked that we take up, we take up his motions tonight. So, Council Rotundo?
Motion to approve.
Any councils? Motion to approve? Approve. So moved.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Council Rotundo that HYM obtain a project labor agreement for any development at Suffolk Downs. Further, that the mayor look into the feasibility of providing a TIF for the Suffolk Downs project to ensure competitiveness regarding Amazon.
Speaks for itself.
Motion approved.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Council Keith that the mayor request the traffic commission to transition the McKinley School Lot into a Minnesville parking lot to support local businesses and alleviate parking needs throughout the winter.
Any councils? Permission to speak from the chair? Real brief, we obviously witnessed tonight the need for parking, and we have an empty lot that, that I don't see why, it's close to the downtown district of Riviere, and it's unused. So, if we're looking to put any revenue into repaving or restriping it, I don't think it would, I don't think it would be too much to ask. I think the city should do it. It would help the residents, it would help especially during the winter, during the winter months when people struggle to park on the streets. And I've gotten a lot of feedback from local residents that they would love to see that happen, and I'm sure the businesses would thrive a little bit more with that, especially a new restaurant opening up on Broadway in Yemen soon.
I don't know if it's possible. There is some space in the back, off of that matter, and the front. A lot of the kids during the day, you know, they, I'm sure we all see them, they go in there and play basketball. Maybe there's a way that we can kind of fence off an area and put up hoops if there's an area in the front that's not being utilized, just so that they can play there. Take a, you know, a bobcat to just go over it.
On a side note, there's some grant money that's already been approved to refurbish the courts, and that's something that we're working on. It wasn't able to get done before the summer, so we're looking at doing it during the spring.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Motion to approve.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Council Keith that the mayor request the traffic commission to install a permanent traffic signal speed reader on Park Ave to help reduce speeding on Park Ave.
Any councils? I just want to point out again, speaking from the chair, that this is, I've addressed Park Ave speeding since I've been a councillor, and I'd like to have some support from the mayor's office with this in the DPW or whatever departments need to, public safety, need to get involved. And this has also been approved by the mayor of Park Ave, Mr. Pantano. Motion approved.
Point of information.
State your point.
You didn't stick Mr. Arthur Pantano on the mayor, did you?
I didn't have to. Mr. Mayor?
I will proudly say that whenever I drive down Park Ave and I see, and I see Mr. Pantano, or if I'm running Park Ave, which I did see him over, over the summer, and he was a little flabbergasted to see me. We always talk about these issues, and, and, Council, I understand your, your, your point, and we'll, we'll do our best to address the issue.
Appreciate the support. Thank you.
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by Council Keith that the mayor utilize the funds available to install security cameras at Harry Delarussue Stadium as originally submitted in the construction projects, budget, and plans.
Speaks for itself. Motion approved.
Calendar item number 24, motion presented by Council McKenna that the mayor request the DPW during the months of October and November to have a city dump truck follow the street sweeper to collect the leaves. With the current arrangement, the street sweeper must drive off route to dump the leaves in a truck located in another area of the city.
Council McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So, Monday, last Monday, we had street sweeping, and we had a problem with the street sweeper because he kept on, he didn't pick up the leaves, and the reason why is because the dump truck wasn't following him because a lot of people were on vacation. So, I'm just asking for next year, because street sweeping is over, Monday, if a dump truck could follow the, the street sweeper and dump, so they don't have to go to a designated, leave their spot and go to a designated spot to dump the leaves. Thank you.
Any councils? Motion to approve? Good motion, by the way. Great motion. Thank you. Motion approved.
Calendar item number 25, motion presented by councillors Rotundo, Patch, Janino, and Keith that the mayor request the traffic commission to make Asti Ave a local access street during certain hours of the day decided upon by the residents of Asti Ave. Further, that this request be expedited once enacted by the council. Additionally, that once enacted signage and an officer posted on Asti Ave for enforcement and education to the public within 30 days or less.
Council Rotundo?
I think it speaks for itself, even though it's a mouthful.
Council Janino? Council Janino?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I think that this is a very necessary motion, and my only recommendation is that we can consider Green Tree Lane as well, which I know my colleague, Council Rotundo, had brought up. This originally started with some emails from a constituent that observed the backup of traffic on this street, and I know Sergeant Janino and the Traffic Department's been working on this as well with the residents down there. So, I think that with some collaboration from the council as well as the neighborhood, we can come to a we can come to a conclusion and kind of figure out what the best option is. But it's kind of hard to just tackle Asti Ave and not talk about Green Tree Lane because when they're cutting through, they're hitting both streets. Thank you.
Councilor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This is a great idea, but as we know, all the traffic... I think Council Rotundo's and the people requesting this during the afternoon rush hour, which the rush hour now for Route 1 seems to be like starting at 2:00 in the afternoon. And what they're doing is they're coming down the off-ramp, and they're either going left to go down Green Tree and cut through Asti to get to Marlden Street, or they go right to go to cut through Everett and Marlden. I don't see a remedy here for the immediate area surrounding these streets. I think it's going to have to... Studies really is going to have to be done to see where these cars are going to go. And it's all fear and good to say you're going to have a police officer there for 30 days, but, you know, after that, I just... I just... I wish we could come up with a better solution. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Council Rotundo?
Thank you. I think Councilor Patch is 100% correct, and I should have probably elaborated it. The reason to have the police officer there for a period of time is one of the things is when you make traffic changes like that, in particular like off of Park Avenue when you turn one street to a one-way, the people that are in the area don't realize it, or people who normally take that pathway don't realize it because either they don't live in the city, or maybe they don't live in the area. And it would only be a temporary basis, but you're right, Charlie, we have to think a little bit more about this.
Thank you, George. If I could, one other...
Councilor Patch, state your point.
People got to be aware that this problem is created mainly from the people who live north of us. And, you know, it's not local residents that are really using this cut through. So, you know, again, I really wish we could come up with a better remedy, but that'd be up to the Traffic Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Motion to approve. Madam Clerk, may I suspend the rules real briefly? I'd like to see if... Actually, I didn't recognize we were going to swear them in tonight. If we could invite the two appointees up to be sworn real quickly, as I know that they've been waiting patiently.
Both please raise your right hand and repeat after me using your own name after I say "aye." Aye?
John Lopes?
solemnly swear.
Oh, yes.
Say it.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially.
discharge and perform...
Discharge and perform.
all the duties incumbent upon me...
All the duties incumbent upon me.
as a member of the zoning board of appeals...
As a member of the zoning board of appeals.
agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
of the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That was off memory by Madam Clerk. That was pretty good. Impressive.
I got it down, guys. And... Just state your sign.
27. November. I'm writing that.
When I see you guys on Wednesday, I usually come into my office before you go upstairs. I just have a packet to give you guys for new appointees.
Which is where?
The city clerk's office.
City clerk's. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Just write a ZBA, my likes do it. John? That's why I understand that you're going to be the alternate, so please just write ZBA alternate.
Write, yeah. Okay.
Today's date?
Yeah. It's 27.
27?
Yeah. Okay.
Madam Clerk? I'm going to take up the next motion. Madam Clerk? Thank you. Welcome back.
Calendar item number 26, motion presented by Councilor Rotundo that the mayor request the chief of police to investigate how allegedly three level-three sex offenders are living in the same house on Seer Street. Further, that a letter be sent to our state delegation to change the current Massachusetts general law that demands lifetime parole for level-three sex offenders, as well as a known affiliation clause. In addition, that the city's website provide a link to the SORB.
Councilor Rotundo?
Thank you. I'm a little perplexed that three level-three sex offenders can live in the same house 50 feet behind Sullivan Park, 100 feet from a daycare center, 1,500 feet from the Paul Revere School, and yet convicted felons for murder, for rape, for bank robbery, albeit a mafioso, cannot associate with each other as felons. Yet we have three level-three sex offenders living in a property on Seer Street. It is beyond comprehension. Unfortunately, the law was overturned by the ACLU through the courts several years back in, I believe, 2014. It was challenged in Lynn regarding the distance on a residency law. This is what happens when that takes place, when people don't think of the consequences. These three level-three sex offenders, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Coco, and I want to thank him for bringing that to my attention. All three were children under 14, pedophiles, scumbags. I don't like to hold my words on these people. And as far as I'm concerned, why is the legislature not acting upon this? Why aren't they making the law to incorporate lifetime parole for these people? Why is it that a handful of lawyers at the State House hold everybody else to this type of behavior? This should not be. Mr. Mayor, I'm pleading with you and every councillor up here to ask the state legislature to change the law to incorporate lifetime parole if it's not already there and the ability to associate with pedophiles if it's not already there. More importantly, I'd like the chief of police to investigate whether they appropriately filed out the documentation requisite to be in the city and see if they're actually living there. A lot of times, from what I've done some research, is that they claim that as a place that they're living, and they're actually not, to evade, to evade detection and the police. Folks, think about this. My daughter used to play baseball, softball, right at Sullivan Park. That's scary. Three of them just sitting there. There's a little pathway. It's dark. It's a wooden step that goes over the culvert, and their house is right there. Behind them, the street next to them, there's a litter of children's, girls, you know, bicycles and helmets. I have to hold myself. I am so angry. These people are just despicable. There's no place for them on earth in my mind. And so, I care to not hold my words. They're scumbags. Plain and simple. So, I would hope that you would support me in this effort and excuse my vernacular tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Rotundo. Any other councilors wishing to speak? Member of the audience wishing to speak?
Joe Coco, 36 Seer Street. I had a piece of paper that I wanted to read, but it's like to know a real... I mean, I want to thank the mayor for cleaning the... Every year, I call John Powers and I call the mayor's office, and I get the weeds cleaned down at the end of my street, which is right by the footbridge, right by the baseball field, because we've had people living down there in tents... You remember this, John? Living down there in tents, people that were homeless. And when the kids were running around there, they were actually chasing them, telling them, "Get the hell out of there." Now, we have three... Level three, not level ones or twos, level three. One, who I was told, I have some good information, that has been convicted four times. Four times. There is, in my mind, there's no place on earth for these guys. Drop them off on an island somewhere, not in front of my house. I have six grandchildren. I know many of you have grandchildren and children, friends that have children. These guys, what are they doing together? Planning on their next victim? I mean, come on. We got three of them together. And I'm looking on the computer, and it says the chances of a level-three sex offender offending again is like 95%. So, we got them living on Seer Street. Now, I know there was a couple on Revere Street, one. Maybe every so often, you would find one here and there. But we got three living together. What state is allowing three level-sex offenders to live together? You can't get three bank robbers living together. I'm just standing before you that maybe we could set a precedent in Revere. Maybe we can send something to the State House saying, "This ain't going to go." Do you know how many kids in the summertime I see past my doorway going to the footbridge to go over to the beach? Do you know how many kids play in the Little League Park, which is right next to them? There's no way they should have been allowed to buy that house in that area. And I'm not saying because it's across from me, because I seen them look eyeing kids the other day. The nice day we had, 60-degree weather. I seen them eyeing them walking by. I want to go... I yelled at one of them. He ran in the house. I want to go over there with a hammer, but I know I'm going to end up in jail. I mean, some... I mean, come on. Realistically, we're not talking about a bank robber. We're not talking a guy that went in Walgreens with a gun. We're talking about the lowest of all lowest, a child molester, under 14 years of age. Who knows how old they were? Maybe three years old, maybe four that they molested? Who knows? I can't get that information. Maybe somebody here can. But I'm asking the mayor, I'm asking all you people, for the sake of Revere, for the sake of Revere's children, for the sake of the children that come in here during the summer. We... Three of them living together? That's unheard of. I can't believe it. I see them going to work. Do you know what I go through every morning? I see them going to work and coming from work. Supposedly, that's where they're going. They got a trailer parked by their house. Who knows? There might be some kid in that trailer. We read about it every day. We read about it every day. We do. All of us. We read about this stuff every day, yet I got it right across the street from me. Level-three sex offenders, not one, not two, but three, all convicted of similar crimes, and they're living together. What are they doing? Playing checkers? Are they playing chess together? Are they planning on their next day at work? Are they planning a nice day out to eat? No. They're planning on their next victim, and that you can take to the bank. That's all I have to say. Shame on the city if we can't do something about it.
Eric Clay Podekio, 43 Tapley Avenue. I got a phone call from a friend that lives over on Bay Road, and she was absolutely mortified when she got not only one, but three notifications of three level-three sex offenders living in the same residence. I'd like to commend Council Rotundo for taking up this motion, and I ask that you vote on it favorably. Thank you.
Council Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly, first of all, I want to commend Council Rotundo for putting this motion before us. I have had calls myself from residents down there. And when I did have the calls, I have contacted Chief Guido and I believe Captain Mangini, and the officers did, to their credit. And, you know, their hands are just as tied as ours are. We can request the state government, the Speaker, Governor Baker, to perhaps draft some legislation that would prevent this from reoccurring in Revere and perhaps occurring in any other city or town in the Commonwealth, because it just doesn't make sense to me. But I do want to commend Sean Randall and Officer Captain Mangini for going down in the neighborhood and making sure that all of the residents down there were notified. And until something is done, I would caution all of the residents down there to beware. Keep an eye on your children. And this is not something that they should have to worry about, but is a fact of life right now, and it's unfortunate. But everyone has to be more vigilant with regard to these individuals and keeping an eye on their children in that neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councilors? I commend Council Rotundo as well for bringing this forth, and it's the unfortunate side of this is where the system fails us and fails the average Joe. And unfortunately, lawyers protect the criminals more than they protect the innocent people out there. And this is a problem, and I hope that this does reach the state delegation and our representation so that this, something can be done about this, you know. Council Rotundo?
Thank you. And through you to the mayor, and I hate to put you on the spot, even though I like your socks tonight. That said, do we currently... Because I had asked for it, and I don't know if it was implemented or if it's not allowed, but are we sending out... So, in Florida and other states, what they do is they send out a letter with level-three sex offenders, and I'm not sure if we can do it with level-two, 300 feet surrounding the property. If we're not currently do that, I mean, for a cheap amount of money, we'd be the first one in the state to do it, I believe. And I think that would be...
In this instance, everyone in the area was notified. I did speak to Chief Guido earlier tonight, actually, and he was in touch with the Sex Offender Registry Board about what we can do to make sure that we're legally, we're doing the correct thing, and that we're notifying folks and that everyone knows in any neighborhood where these individuals may be living. And I, you know, wholeheartedly agree with the fact that as father of two young boys, obviously, you know, we oftentimes can think personally about situations. It puts a new perspective certainly on individuals that could do something like that, especially level-three sex offenders. They, at a minimum, we need to make sure that our residents know where they are and if they're living in our neighborhoods.
With that said, I just hope that we can forward to the state delegation a request to change the law so that we have lifetime parole. And I do want to make this clear, because I don't want people to think that it's only these people... People have to understand that it's a very sad statistic. You are correct, Joe. It's almost 90% for recidivism rate for level-three sex offenders. And sadly enough, the majority of children that are molested are raped in this country, raped by someone like them. So, this, you know, if you've got a moment, talk to your children. Set boundaries. Look at the SORB, the Sex Offender Website. They give you tools to teach your children how to basically avoid people like that. But more importantly, if, God forbid, something happens, how to talk to you and how to let you know so that doesn't happen again. So, we have a responsibility to ensure that we protect you, and we'll do everything we can. And at this point, I leave that up to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillor. Motion to approve? Motion approved.
Calendar item number 27, motion presented by Council Rotundo that the City Council present Wayne Rose with a certificate of appreciation for starting Safe Saturdays for our youth.
Council Rotundo?
Thank you. I think this is a great thing, what Wayne did. I want to recognize him and commend him for doing it, and I hope that you support me in this effort. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Motion to approve?
Late motion presented by Councilor Guanasso that the city council awards certificates of appreciation to the Squad B Pop Honored Football Team for winning the Greater Boston League Division Championship, the Eastern Massachusetts Championship, and runners-up the New England Super Bowl Championship.
Very briefly, Mr. Vice President, as you're well aware, that, uh, they did a wonderful job in representing the city of Revere throughout all the, uh, events and I want to give recognition to these young men, uh, for the job well done. And certainly we want to add the, uh, I was asked to add that the cheerleaders be also added on to this particular motion. But the, the B squad, and by the way, I had the pleasure of sponsoring that team and that's not the reason they're getting, uh, notification of this great award, I'm just so proud of each and every one of them, the wonderful job they did for us.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? I may add, uh, that there was many, um, city council and, and city representatives that sponsored, uh, the league and as I, I speak, uh, unbiasedly, I'm the president of the organization, uh, but, uh, there was no financial, uh, uh, gain here, so I, I was, I was told I have permission, permission to speak, um, but they did a phenomenal job and I look forward to having them up in the council chambers for, uh, their, uh, their commendation or appreciation. Thank you. All in favor? So moved?
One last, no, one last late motion.
We have a late, late motion.
Uh, this is from Councilor Powers that the mayor instruct the city planner to prepare a zoning amendment to the RC 1 district along Revere Beach Boulevard from Oak Island Street North to 580 Revere Beach Boulevard to a new zoning district with allowable building heights not to exceed 60 feet and six stories as opposed to the existing zoning district which allows heights of up to 120 feet and 13 stories. The zoning change is necessary to bring into compliance the height and scale of buildings with this predominantly residential area and to provide a transition and building scale to the existing RA single-family district.
Council Powers, would you, uh, recommend this go to zoning subcommittee?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the motion is, uh, very, uh, clear. Uh, it would prevent any more high-rise buildings from being built, uh, anywhere from Oak Island Street, uh, uh, north on the boulevard, down to the area around Beach House. And to, we could keep everything in, um, some conformity with what is constructed down there, uh, with the, uh, local residents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Powers. So I'm gonna request that this go to zoning subcommittee? All in favor? So moved? A motion to adjourn. Have a great night.